They did. I thought so, I gave them a reference.
Good evening. Welcome to the April 2nd, 2013, meeting of the Raymond Select Board. We have a very full agenda tonight, so we'd like to just move it along as quickly as possible. And we'll start with the minutes of the previous meeting. I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from February 5th and March 5th.
Second.
Comments? Gerald?
On the regular meeting of March 5th, on page 8 of 9, it was the top paragraph. It was during the discussion about the budget proposal, and it stated the overlay was, this is in the presentation that I gave, the overlay was reduced to 70,000, and that was 27,000.
Thank you. Any other comments? Corrections? All in favor? Gating's approved. And we'll move into a public hearing for the application for malt liquor license renewal. William Coppersmith, DBA Fisherman's Catch, right on Roosevelt Trail. And Louise Lester, are you here?
Hi, Anne. This application is a renewal. Mr. Coppersmith has given us his application, and I believe you'll have it before you. Everything's the same. Fire Department's happy.
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve the renewal of the liquor license for William Coppersmith. Oops, that's right, we're still public hearing. Sorry, I'm ahead of myself.
You have to take public comment now. Members of public wish to comment on this issue? There being no public comment? We'll close the public comment part of the hearing. Now for a motion?
Motion to approve the application for the liquor license renewal for William Coppersmith, DBA Fisherman's Catch.
Second. Comment? Headed board? All in favor? Passed? Move along to new business, consideration of acceptance of Raymond Beach Management lease agreement with Diane Monte and Ron Demers, DBA Rocket Monty's Hot Dogs and more. This is headed by Board of Selectmen. You please get up there, please. Yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If we could have a quick summary of what we asked the code enforcement officer and the town to look into from our last meeting before we hear from those folks, I'd like to hear that first if possible.
Yes.
First code enforcement officer for town Raymond. I have met with the applicants on their peddler's license application and found a few things that need to be worked out, but in general, we've worked out most of the details. Did you have a specific question, Mike?
No, I just, I knew we had to work through a few things, and I've read the proposal, I just wanted to hear it verbally.
We discussed the location of the hot dog cart, what they'd have for storage containers. We discussed power. I think we've ironed out most of the details. One item that did come up, they're going to rent a few canoes and kayaks which will be stored on a trailer, I think you have pictures of in your packet. And we did discuss the option that they could apply for a dock permit and put in a small dock if they chose to. And I did want to discuss that with the board, that if you felt that, if they felt, it isn't part of their proposal tonight, but in the future, if they wanted to, if we had a discussion and a general feeling from the board, I could permit that without having them coming, come back to the board for that approval. So that wasn't part of their application, but that was something that we did discuss.
Would we just add it to the contract as a possible use? Thank you, Chris.
Any other questions from the board?
Chris, then we also discuss waiving the $500 application.
Yes, I think that's in the agreement for the first year.
Just a comment. In your office, the other day, I heard them comment that they were looking into solar power to charge their system.
That was one of the options.
I find that a very positive thing, so.
But I'll let them speak to that. I don't know whether they decided to do that yet.
Well, they said they'd look into it, so. Okay. Thanks, Chris. I think everybody ought to hear that solar power thing.
Well, we don't need a great deal of power for the hot dog cart. We do need to run a small mini fridge, lights, radio, coffee maker. And we've looked into, rather than having a, the generator I have right now at least is fairly loud. We are currently plugged into, you know, to 110, so we don't need it. But we don't have that option down at the beach unless we were to run something from that pole all the way over, which is quite a ways over. So we had looked into the, you know, the option of solar power being enough to generate all the power we need to maintain our marine batteries and run the refrigerator. That's, the biggest usage is the refrigerator, so we thought about that. So I've talked to a couple of different firms, and they're saying somewhere in the area of two panels on the roof would take care of that. And I think it's the, you know, environmentally good way to go, quiet. My only problem is worrying about them getting borrowed, and I hope that doesn't happen, you know, but anything can happen as far as that goes. So, I mean, we'd like to mount two to the roof, up to our existing cart now, and just manage to charge our batteries and have an inverter to run, run the refrigerator. So, it's what we're working on right now.
Thank you.
And Chris brought up the option of the possibility of a dock, and I actually do have my dad's old dock, so, which is in decent shape, and you could look at that when you come up to inspect the, inspect the freezers and things. And that's only about maybe 30 feet.
Any questions?
So at this point right now, you're just considering the kayaks and the canoes, or are you pretty, pretty set on that?
We're pretty, we're pretty set on that. We issued, we sent in along with our contract, our agreement for rental agreement to show to the, you know, to the town's attorney, see how, what he thought about that, how he felt about it. But we'd like, we have two kayak, we have three kayaks and thinking about purchasing a fourth, and then we have two canoes as well. And I still want to do the swimming lessons once school gets out.
And that was, that was going to be my second question.
Yeah, I'm going to get, I'm going to get recertified again. It's been, I mean, I was certified as a lifeguard, water safety instructor, and water safety instructor, you know. So I'm going to get recertified for all those again, and give lessons, give lessons to the town.
And if I may, just, just one comment about the canoes and kayaks, and I've been an advocate of that. I've always thought that that was one of those value-added items that would allow a small operation to exist down there by utilizing the frontage liquid swimming lessons. We have had in the past some concerns from citizens about folks who are using watercraft and stopping at lakefront properties along the lake. That is something absolutely you would have no control over. It could have been, as brought up in discussions, it could have been Ice Shack folks, it could be a number of people who utilize any lake and basically don't respect other people's property. So I guess my only concern or request would be if you do decide to do any rentals of that nature, that you take the additional time to instruct people about property rights and respecting the environment, which I'm sure you're going to do anyway. But that friendly reminder, it's similar to milfoil inspections. If you remind people, just possibly you'll save one or two incidents.
Sure. And I agree. I live on Thompson Lake, you know, and, you know, we feel the same way. We, you know, the only time I need to go to shore is when I flip over and I can't get back in, so. And she laughs.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Thanks, Charlie. I'll make a motion that the town of Raymond enter into a contract with Rocket Monty's for a five-year contract, subject to review by the code enforcement officer, our town attorney, and the town manager.
Second.
Any comments?
For review after five, or for review each year?
No. It's a five-year, one-year renewals on it. No further comments? All in favor? Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie. All right. Next, we have a consideration of the amended heavy oil sands resolution. And Mike Reynolds, Selectmen Reynolds, will lead that.
Yeah, that's a, that's a motion.
I would make a motion for reconsideration of the, let's see, resolution to protect the health and safety of local citizens, water bodies, and other natural resources in relation to the potential transportation of oil sands through Raymond.
A second. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you.
At the last board meeting, Mr. Chairman, I did write a resolution for discussion purposes. As part of the presentations that came up during that, I wanted some more time in order to do some research, and so I did vote against the resolution at that time. And I want to thank the folks in the audience, if you're here, who got me information very quickly. My mailbox was not inundated, but I got the information I asked for by a couple of folks, and I got more information from other concerned citizens as well. So I had my questions answered within about seven days, at which point, as a member of the prevailing side that did not vote for the resolution last time, I did ask the chair for reconsideration, which is why we're doing this here. Also during the last month, a friendly amendment was put forth to amend the resolution slightly, and I thought it made the language in the resolution a little bit better and a little more precise. And so now we have the resolution brought back with a slight amendment, and I am.
What was the gist of the resolution?
The gist of the whole resolution?
Yeah.
It's right there. There we go. So this is the, I believe, the third time we've had the resolution in front of us, Mr. Chair, February, March, and now April. I am very comfortable with the resolution as presented and would make a motion that we accept the resolution as presented.
I'll second that. Further discussion? Yes, Gerald?
I guess there are a few, just a few items I'd like to clean up, only because this town has spent a fair amount of time in discussion, discussions on this topic. A lot of folks have taken part in this discussion and taken the time to come to these meetings. Just a couple of items. I guess I would like to hear, I guess Mr. Wilson, Larry Wilson from Portland Pipeline isn't here this evening. So I guess, one of, one of the issues that came up in our initial meeting in, in February, on February 12th, was Mr. Wilson indicated, and it was in the slide presentations also, that Portland Pipeline has interactions with first responders as well as local agencies, community outreach, coordinated response training. He stated, "We have an outstanding relationship with emergency response agencies and a legacy of outstanding performance." And I guess I would just like to ask Chief Tupper if he could respond, because at that very same meeting, he also indicated that Chief Tupper reminded me that we need to do a better job with drilling, and pardon the pun, I don't think he meant drilling, I think he meant training for our local first responders. And I, I just wanted to see if there's, if we've made some progress on that.
To answer the question in short, no. There have been no scheduled trainings that we're aware of at this point in time. However, in saying that, springtime is usually the planning phase for those large-scale events and training. I fully expect to be contacted within the next month or so. If not, then we are going to be contacting the pipeline, because I think it's important. And it doesn't even need to be a large-scale event or training, it just needs to have, happen as a training locally, where we talk to them about specifics of the pipeline and what to do. That's basically a review. So that's our plan, is to go at it from that angle.
I guess my comment to that is I'm extremely disappointed, not in the Raymond Public Safety Department, but in Portland Pipeline. Again, the presentation that we heard doesn't seem to match up with, or the representation that was made doesn't match up with the reality. And I think that buttresses the concerns that a lot of folks in the, in the community had about being used, this forum being used for political advantages either side. And I'm more of a realist and want to know, I don't, and I think I mentioned it, I don't care if it's marshmallow going through there, that, that the appropriate laws that are on the books and representations that are made and promises that are made are being kept. So I just wanted to verify that. Okay, thank you, Bruce. There was also a nice presentation that talked about engineering, and I think this is for the community as a whole, to just, again, I don't want to take a lot of people's time, but we were, we were told about engineering and the efficacy of, of systems when they were put in place. And the example of the Golden Gate Bridge was used, and the example of the Empire State Building was also used. And just a few fun facts, but I don't think they're funny when you put it in context of the seriousness of the discussions we were having. The Golden Gate Bridge was completed in 1937. The bridge was originally painted with red lead primer, in a lead-based top coat. Thirty years until the mid-1960s, lead paint chips from the bridge contaminated San Francisco Bay and the surrounding San Francisco and Sausalito neighborhoods. The bridge has been closed three times due to wind gusts between 69 and 75 miles an hour. That might sound like a lot to someone in San Francisco, that's just a category one to us. The original Tacoma Narrows Bridge, a later design by the same architect and engineer, collapsed because of an unexpected aerial elastic flutter. So again, when we, when we point to examples, we always have to, I come from a risk management background that says if something hasn't happened, then it's likely to happen. So again, just the seriousness of this. There was a seismic retrofit. The bridge once was, had been able to withstand any magnitude of foreseeable earthquake, was actually vulnerable to complete collapse triggered by the failure of supports on the 320-foot arch over Fort Point. There was a $392 million upgrade in order to at least improve its risk to seismic events. The Empire State Build, Empire, Empire State Building was completed in 1931, and it was the tallest building in the world until 1972. It was eclipsed by the World Trade Center North Tower in 1972. But then sadly, following the terrorist attack of September 11th, 2001, the Empire State Building once again became the tallest building in New York City. In 1945, a Mitchell B-25 bomber crashed into the building. And the Art Deco spire at the 102-floor level was originally designed as a dirigible landing depot. And we don't have to refer to the Hindenburg disaster to see that the engineers quickly decided after two attempts that they probably shouldn't be landing dirigibles on the Empire State Building. My point being is that between earthquakes, accidents, unfortunately, the terrorism that we face in this world today, all of those are events that you can't just brush off and say, "It will never happen." And so I appreciate all the information that's been given to us from both sides, in the community and the, and the industry. But again, caution is always, and should be our first and foremost, when we're dealing with environmental considerations. And my last, my last thing, and this is, again, just a fun fact, Mr. Quinn's here from the New England Petroleum Council, and in his presentation in March, I believe, he mentioned that even though Maine has a 10% higher tax on gasoline than Massachusetts, that Maine, because you come up here and you go skiing, that, that Maine gas prices are either equivalent or lower than Massachusetts. Well, I was born and brought up in Quincy, Massachusetts, which is the city of presidents and Braintree also, and the home of the American Revolution, so I'm familiar with both Maine and Massachusetts. And on June 28th, 2013, the price in Quincy, Massachusetts was $3.59 for regular fuel. It was $3.75 in Raymond. And today, the price in Quincy was $3.57, and in Raymond it was $3.72. So again, when we're pushing facts back and forth, there's, and we're saying that some, someone isn't representing what they say they're representing, and we heard things like, "Wrong, wrong, wrong." Well, that, you have to be careful with the facts. I mean, sometimes they do get in the way of the truth. And so I just would like to point that out for the future, that there are no guarantees in this. It's, it is what it is. That pipeline's there. It will probably be there for quite a while. And my biggest concern, I think, was addressed by Chief Tupper, is that we get back on board and right, right-track our response to, in case there is an event.
Thank you. And along those same lines, we were reminded just today, I was reminded anyway, that there's been a very recent oil spill in the Keystone Line, which was just approved by the federal government in Arkansas.
It was the Keystone Line.
It wasn't the Keystone Line?
It was ExxonMobil.
ExxonMobil.
Alberta Clipper.
Okay, well, I stand corrected on that, but nevertheless, it was a spill. I'd like to ask for public comment on this now, that we've, we've taken this here, and I recognize some faces. Does anyone care to comment, I guess?
I'm just concerned about the integrity of the pipeline, because it was built in the 40s.
Yes.
How is that?
You have to identify yourself.
Yes, would you identify yourself, ma'am?
The podium.
Beth Blood.
Your name and your residence?
Beth Blood. I live at Seven Mill Street, Raymond, Maine. And my concern is about the pipeline and how is that being investigated? I mean, it was built in the 40s, from what I heard, and I heard that tar sands is extremely corrosive, and that the stability of the pipeline may not hold up to tar sands. And that if it got into droughtwater systems, it'd totally destroy this area.
I'm sorry, ma'am, what are you asking?
I'm asking about who, how do you know that this pipeline is safe?
Well, we're asking for inspection of the pipeline, if they intend to put oil sands through it.
Who's in charge of that?
That would be the state government.
So we'd have to address the state government?
If you read the resolution, you'll see it's pointed out who's in charge of the pipeline.
Okay.
It's the Maine DEP, let me put my glasses on, Department of Transportation, Pipeline Hazards Materials Safety Administration, the EPA, OSHA, Army Corps of Engineers, and the Coast Guard.
So ultimately...
It's in the second, third paragraph up from the bottom.
Do you want me to answer her question real quick?
Yes, sure. Go ahead, Leah.
The town of Raymond has an excellent...
Please identify yourself, Leah.
Sorry.
I'm Leah Stotzen, and I'm a member of the Conservation Commission, and I'm a resident of Raymond. I'm also a co-coordinator of the Healthy Waters Coalition. The town of Raymond has an excellent webpage with all this information on it. It's, if you go to the town of Raymond, Raymond Conservation Commission, there's information on oil sands and pipeline issues. And if Mr. Seer, David Seer, he mentioned at the February meeting that it was a comprehensive webpage. So we've worked really hard to put information on there for residents, so there's lots of background information. Does that help?
Yes, it does.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to comment? Yes.
Carrie Sullivan, Deep Cove Shores and, well, Deep Cove Road now, in Raymond. I think this is a step in the right direction. However, I'm very leery at the fact that the state government is cutting all kinds of, all kinds of programs and everything. And I'm just afraid that they're not going to put into this what really needs to be put into. They're not the ones that, well, they will be suffering, but mostly, it's going to be the people in Ray, in Raymond that will be suffering if there is an oil spill. And that is a really old pipeline. As evidence, oil spills happen, happen quite frequently. We just had one in Arkansas. And the best solution to me would be that we would not allow sands to go, oil sands to go through there, and check into stopping the pipeline, period, because it is so old, and I just don't trust it. That's my opinion.
Thank you.
And I'm sticking to it.
Hi, yes, I'm William Lud from Seven Mill Street as well, in Raymond. And some of the concerns, I'm sure has been brought up before, but one of the big concerns I have is the fact that the, this oil line is as old as it is. And you talk about studies being done by state and federal governments. I worked on nuclear projects for several years with GE, where I saw several cases where a nuclear project, a reworked project, was approved by state and federal levels when they should not have been approved. And I know that from fact, because I built, I helped work on the cooling systems for nuclear power plants. And so I'm, I'm a little bit leery when I, when I'm hearing, this is going to be tossed over to state and federal government agencies to determine whether or not a 60-year-old pipeline is going to be able to support these tar sands, which we know are very caustic. They're, they're going to eat through, you know, they destroy pipes, you know. I don't know all the details. I know the other fact that at the other end of that pipeline in South Portland, there's going to be a, for lack of terms, like a refinery, that's going to be burning off these chemicals that are being used. Has there been any, any studies on that, too, as far as the, the air quality? What type of impact is that going to have? You know, we're impacting not just local here, you know. We're, we're, we're going to have an impact if we have an oil spill, especially. We're going to be impacting not only the residents of Raymond, we're going to be impacting thousands, hundreds of thousands of people that, that rely on the water from Sebega Lake, you know. So what do we do? We tell them to stop buying Nestle's bottled water? I, I don't get this. I really, really don't get it. So I, I just want to, you know, I'm totally opposed to any approval of any kind to have this pipeline go through.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Mr. Laney?
Steve Laney, 66 Musson Road. Having come from all the budget discussions, my issue here is, I understand we get about $30,000 a year from the pipeline in property tax. We have no other way to generate revenue from them, other than property tax. My concern is if and when there's a spill, town of Raymond is the one that's going to be picking up the tab. So I would hope there's some way that there can be some kind of fund established, maybe from the pipeline, or some way that, so we can feel comfortable that if there is a spill, the town of Raymond is not going to be the ones that suffer financially.
There's state law, there's a hazmat fund in state law that pays for any oil spills.
Does that include all of Mr. Tupper's expenses as well?
Includes everything.
Everything?
Yes.
Thank you.
DP is, you know, everybody's saying the taxpayer is funded. DP is almost 100% funded by fines and fees paid by the oil companies.
Mr. Bruegel, you have to raise your hand. I'm sorry.
Can you raise your hand?
He injured his arm, that's why I worried about him. Anyone else? A lot of people here. There must be some more.
Mary Ann Van Bars. I'm down in, on the water, across the street in Raymond. And I'm here, there's a lot of people who would be here, but they couldn't. So I'm here on their behalf just to ask you to please pass the resolution. I think it's the only responsible thing to do. We're a ways off from this actually happening, but I think, you know, there's no other way you can go about this. Casco took care of it. There's a whole lot of things that have to happen before there's actually oil sands flowing through Raymond, and I'm really hoping it doesn't happen. But I think on your part, as leaders in the town, this resolution is the very least you can do. So please sign it.
Thank you. Further comment? In closing the public hearing part of this, and we have a motion on the floor, and second, to approve the resolution as it stands. All in favor? Opposed? Resolution passes. Thank you. All right, moving along. The next item. I heard you humming. All right, thank you. The next issue is consideration of Sebago Water District Resolution. Mr. Ted Davis, are you a resident of Raymond?
No, I'm not. I'm a resident of Sebago.
We have to get the...
Asking unanimous consent to allow Mr. Davis to speak.
All right, I'm asking at this point for unanimous consent to allow Mr. Davis to speak. Do I have that? Raise your hand, please. Yes, okay, Mr. Davis, go ahead.
When FERC gave their opinion on the relicensing of the Illware Dam, there were a number of people that were against high water, including friends of Sebago Lake and Roger Wheeler, and there were other people that were in fear of low water. And the FERC recommendations was that the water level should be here in the spring and here in the fall, and they had a specific line where that line should be all summer long. I'm here as a third opinion, that water, I'm concerned about where that water is going, that we're throwing into the ocean. It's a valuable commodity. You probably pay over a dollar for each one of those bottles of water you have up there. And we, the 28,000 acres of Sebago Lake, one inch of water represents just under a million gallons of water per inch, just under a billion, 97 million gallons. And when you lower the water by four feet, in terms of the summer, it comes to 37 billion gallons of water, when we're paying $3.72 a gallon for gasoline, we're paying more than that for water, when you're buying it by the bottle.
Mr. Davis, would you explain to us in a couple of sentences, if you can, if that's possible, what you're asking for in this resolution? What do you expect?
I just want to make people aware that there's, all of the six towns around Sebago, only Standish and Wyndham have a say on the board at the Portland Water District. And I think that towns of Casco, Raymond, Sebago, and Naples should have some kind of a board to oversee, to make resolutions on what's done with the water, instead of throwing it in the ocean. I think we ought to sell it to the Arabs, trade it for gasoline or something like that.
And you think that that requires, that's served by a resolution?
I don't know what it is to do. This is my first stop, my first town that I'm visiting, to try and make people aware of what's happening with that water.
The Portland Water District is set up by statute and state law, so you can't just go out and form your own water district. You have to go to legislature and have that set up. The reason only Raymond...
Somebody has to start it, though.
Right. So that's usually an individual citizen contacting their state senator or state rep. The only, the reason Raymond and Wyndham are part of the Water District is because we have a pipeline that the Portland Water District uses to funnel water down through the towns. That's why the other four towns, they do not have a pipeline from the Portland Water District. That's why they're not members.
In the 1800s, when they decided where this water was going to go, they decided they were going to give it to the power companies. They were going to, the power companies had first refusal. In other words, the river has first refusal. And in most cases, when there's water involved, the first, the door that it goes by first has the rights, and that's not the power companies below the dam.
Well, the paper mill in Westbrook controls that dam and releasing the water.
That's correct.
And they use it for power.
That's correct.
And they're regulated by federal regulators.
Exactly.
So...
But since they don't have any more paper mills down there, paper machines, they're not generating much power. So it's time that something should be done to change the way things are handled. I'm just trying to make people aware that people are against the high water, and there are people against the low water. What happens to the water in between is my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a resolution before us. Do we have a...
I don't think there's any action that needs to be taken, unless somebody wants to make a motion to pass.
Does anyone wish to make a motion to pass this resolution? Since there is no motion, there will be no action. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
All right. Next is consideration of quick claim deed submitted by Sukar.
I'm making a motion to accept that quick claim deed without covenant for William and Heidi Chapman. Well, let me see if I get this right. Book 25536, page 250. Book 26336, page 1. Book 27260, page 173. Book 27989, page 20. Book 28886, page 271. And book 29838, page 2.
Second. Move to second, comment? All in favor? Motion to pass this. I'm sorry, I should...
Is that just Charlie?
Yes. I'm going to skip over the next one in the interest of everyone sitting out here, so you wouldn't have to wait while we're in executive session, and ask for discussion of possible policy regarding the responsibilities of Selectman Chair, also serving as parliamentarian, Mr. Peter Levitt.
Yeah, I just have to try and move things along, a little handout.
So what I've provided is just a suggestion for where this change could take place. It would be in bylaws, section two, parliamentary authority, and this would be the Board of Selectmen bylaws. But certainly at your pleasure, if you wanted to develop a separate policy, I'm sure you could do that. And what I attached to this is just a download off the internet, basically describing the function or the role of a parliamentarian. So I'll just read that briefly here. Serving as a parliamentarian at meetings, the role of a parliamentarian at a meeting is to be a resource to the chair, to assist the chair in conducting, in the conduct of the meeting. Parliamentarian sits adjacent to the chair and unobtrusively gives the chair help, guidance, and support during the meeting. The chair can and should consult with the parliamentarian when not certain on how to rule on a question or proceed in the circumstances. My understandings are that there is no requirement for a parliamentarian. I mean, you have that in your bylaws, that's by choice, but there is no requirement. Actually, the chair ultimately has the final decision.
That's correct.
And so there really is no need for a parliamentarian necessarily. I see there being value in one.
Yes.
That being said, I think that just by the definition of the role of a parliamentarian, it seems to me counterintuitive that if the parliamentarian's primary role is to advise the chair, that the parliamentarian and the chair responsibility shouldn't reside within one person. That's my understanding. I'll leave it to you gentlemen to discuss.
Thank you.
I guess I would just add that that has occurred in the past.
In this, on this board.
If I may.
Yes.
This is directed at me, so I'll answer it. It makes sense to have a separate parliamentarian and a chair if there's a parliamentarian that knows parliamentary procedure more than the chair, because a parliamentarian is only advisory in nature. So if you have a chair that knows parliamentary procedure, you more than likely don't need a parliamentarian. So from my opinion on this is, it's not necessary, but, you know, I'm not the chair now, but I think I am the parliamentarian, and my feeling is I probably know parliamentary procedure better than most, especially people serving on this board right now.
I think it's to our advantage to be served by the select person who knows parliamentary procedure better than anyone else on the board. And at least in my opinion, and my experience here, albeit rather short, Selectman Bruno is that person. And I would say that if he were chairman, as he has been, that the board would still be served by his understanding of parliamentary procedure, his expertise in that area. Anyone else? Yes?
My view is, and it may change year to year, it's according to the board. If the board feels that a parliamentarian is needed over and above the chair, then they would elect. If they felt that that parliamentarian was going to be, or could very well be, the chair, then they may not necessarily need that. I feel at this point, it's an elected position within our board, and I feel very comfortable with the situation that we have right now.
Further comment? Mike?
Peter, I'm just, I'm trying to understand the clarification. In the past, we've had a chair that's held not only the chair, but an appointed parliamentary position. And now what I'm hearing is if we went forward based on our current bylaws, and I'm trying to get an understanding of interpretation from you as well, because if we didn't appoint a parliamentarian because we felt the chair didn't need one, we're not going against our bylaws, are we, the way you read them?
Mike, what I did is, I did strike, and certainly gentlemen can correct me in my interpretation, but I did strike through appoint, because of the last two elections of the parliamentarian, I've seen they were exactly that. There was a vote taken, if I'm not mistaken.
There was.
Yes. So your bylaws are actually not really accurate either, because they say appoint, and the chair isn't really appointing the parliamentarian. It's a majority vote of the board. But more specific, correct, am I correct there? You held elections.
Yes.
You nominate individuals from the board, and then you have a vote.
Yes.
That, by my definition, is not an appointment. An appointment would be the chair selecting someone and saying, "You're going to be the parliamentarian." So I believe that that part is not correct in the bylaws, but I don't know, I would say that, in answer to your question, Mike, there is a little bit of a gray area in the bylaws as far as if that's a required appointment. You know, the shall, the must, the, all of the legalese you could go into, but I don't know if that's waivable or not under your bylaws. But I guess the other added comment I'd make, and I certainly respect Joe Bruno's expertise, and I guess I would not doubt if I handed out a test right now with pencil and paper, he'd probably score the highest, no doubt in my mind there. I have a working knowledge of Roberts rules. I think for the most part, there isn't an individual up there that couldn't assist in the interpretation of the bylaws in Roberts rules.
Thank you, Peter.
Thank you. Charlie?
Yes, my opinion is that the word shall is not permissive. Permissive use of the word is may. So this, by our bylaws, we are required to appoint at this point. That process of appointment is unclear, but the requirement of shall, that's not a permissive use of the language. So we are required. I would go even further, though, in going to the first paragraph, the role of a parliamentarian, that was provided to us by the other Mr. Levitt.
Where are you?
The first, the first, second page, first discussion. A parliamentarian is an expert in the rules of order and proper procedures for the conduct of meetings of deliberative assemblies. Parliamentarians assist organizations in drafting and interpretation of bylaws, rules of orders, and the planning and conduct of meetings. So I believe the role of a parliamentarian is broader than just consulting with the chair or giving advice and counsel to the chair, but the parliamentarian is to give advice and counsel to the whole board in the interpretation. And I think the problem that Mr. Levitt and I have been in the middle of that debate And I think the problem that Mr. Levitt and I have been in the middle of that debate in the past where I've asked for a ruling of the parliamentarian who is also the chair, because I've asked for an interpretation of the chair from a parliamentary point of view, and that person is one and the same. So my needs aren't served as a member, an elected member of this board by not having another individual to consult with on this board, other than what, when it's one and the same person, when that authority lies in the same person, you don't have a diverse and broad base of interpretation. So I think that's where some may say, you want your boards, and we've seen letters come out in chastising about transparency and fairness. And I think all that this request is saying is that from the vantage point of transparency and fairness, not only to the chair, but to the rest of the members, the elected members of this board who actually represent members of the public, that this should either be a may, appoint, and then if the board decides that the chairman doesn't need a parliamentarian, I still don't believe that that alleviates my need for a parliamentarian, even though it may, the chairman may decide I'm the best parliamentarian, and the board may determine that, but a minority opinion, which might not be the popular opinion, but the minority opinion may be, I do wish to have someone else to consult in order for me to do my job. So I don't think it's an unreasonable request. I don't envision it being something that we're going to run into too often, and probably through experience, people will gain more and more experience in parliamentary law. If you look at some towns, they do not absolutely prioritize all their work being done by Robert's Rules of Order. Robert's Rules is referred to as one set of rules. I think the common rules of reasonable person theory of the law, fairness, providing leadership in how to conduct a meeting, a part of the democratic process. I think a reference was made at our last meeting by a speaker saying that it's the king's law, because it's parliamentary, and in a way, we've done away with the king's law. So sometimes in a setting such as this, to be a truly democratic process, you can't be throwing the book at someone every time their commas aren't in the right place. The chair has to run an orderly meeting. I think that can be done in a courteous and a standard way without codifying everything under Robert's Rules of Order. You might as well say we should have a lawyer up here, and we've paid for a lot of them lately, rather than a parliamentarian. I don't think we want to go down that track. I think it's just a reasonable safeguard to the public and the public representatives on this board to separate those two positions, so that you have a more diverse opinion.
Any further comment?
I agree with a lot that you said, Charlie, but I think the parliamentary piece is, it isn't necessarily an opinion, it is the way that it should be done. So if that person is the chair, which is the parliamentarian as well, it's, that's where it is, it isn't necessarily his opinion. Because I don't want to, when Joe steps in, I don't want to hear his opinion, I want to hear, you know, what a parliamentarian would say as fact.
His interpretation.
To lead us to, you know, that drinking hole or whatever it is, so it's.
Remember, it's an advisory opinion of the parliamentarian. It could, the chair could either accept that opinion, or someone could challenge the ruling of the chair at any time also. I mean, that's how you deal with this stuff. A parliamentarian has no more power than just advising. Now, you know, you could take this paragraph out of context and say, well, he's supposed to be writing policy and all this stuff. That's only, you know, if you have a paid position, a full-time parliamentarian, a parliamentarian's there to advise on the running of a meeting in this setting strictly. That's what they do.
But it would be your opinion of how it should run, be ran, it should be.
Well, it would be.
An interpretation.
It's an interpretation of the rules of running a meeting.
Which in a sense is an opinion.
And Charlie's right, it's not always Robert's rules, it's Mason's rules, it's Reid's rules. There are many versions of how to run a meeting, and they're all very similar in nature, so.
And Lonnie, to your point, and sometime, I don't want to be, okay, let me put it this way.
Just say it.
If Mr. Bruno might score the highest on the test, he still might not score a hundred. So.
No doubt I wouldn't score a hundred.
Right.
I totally agree with that.
And so it is not, that opinion that's rendered could still be wrong. And any of us could make that, so it doesn't make.
So in a sense, it was an interpretation, which is an opinion.
Well, it's an interpretation, but it just might be just a wrong, might have the answer wrong. It gets very complex when you start getting into seconding and debatable motions and the order of motions and tabling versus postponing to a time certain, there are, it's a very complicated process, and in a way, we've kind of made our process a little too complicated. And I think what this is doing is trying to unbundle the complications by saying, we're not putting that much stock by saying we shall have a parliamentarian. Maybe the resolution is we may have a parliamentarian, it's not, it's not an enforceable, it's not a bylaw that says we have to have one.
I agree with that.
And then if the decision is made that Mr. Bruno is the chair, and, but it could be Mr. Reynolds, he carries his book, he was given, given to him by Louise, I think.
In the other room.
He's on his third copy. So I think we either one way or the other should clarify this, so we don't run into that problem where someone has raised a question, is asking for an interpretation, and it's only one person who's giving that interpretation.
Charlie, I like the idea of changing shall to where, or to may. I think that's very appropriate.
And that.
Yes.
Mike.
Mike?
I know on other boards where we haven't had a strong parliamentarian, it becomes a discussion on how you're going to go forward, much like I've heard, you know, you folks talk about briefly, and nobody was comfortable being a parliamentarian, so we did not have one, which I guess leads me more to the language which you folks have talked about, the shall versus the may, changing appointed to elected. So I think maybe elected by the board of selectmen is the change possibly here, so that we don't have to have one, especially if you don't have a strong candidate for it. I think it would be inappropriate for a board to elect somebody, just to elect one, if you don't have a strong candidate, and it's going to have to be more group consensus for folks to learn. So I'm comfortable with changing shall to may and appointed to elected.
Yes.
And that's all I would want to change.
Well, then.
The may to, you know, the shall to a may and elected, you know, appointed to elected.
Do we have a motion?
I would make a motion that we amend section two of the Raymond Board of Selectmen bylaws and policies, changing the word shall to may and the word appointed to elected.
Second.
Move to second and comment? Yes, Charles.
And the only comment I would make is that obviously by approving this bylaw, we have not taken away the reserved right of future select boards, should the may and that, and we end up with a conflict at some future point.
Yeah.
This is a change for now, and our bylaws are a living document, just like any, and so.
Dynamic.
If we, some future board decides we haven't acted in order to prevent the conflict or potential conflict, then we would see that about in the future.
Yes, agreed. Move to second then?
One more question. The, after selectmen, that's where it stops.
Correct.
It doesn't continue with the position, parliamentarian will not be held by the chair. That was something that was added in after. Thank you.
Any further comment? Move to seconded? All in favor? unanimous? Thank you. You're not, you're not leaving.
No, I've just got one more.
Oh, okay. How did you know?
I got the agenda of our excellent website.
Item B, discussion of possible policy regarding use of town-owned facilities. Thank you. Mr. Levitt, once more?
Peter Levitt, two Levitt Road. In order to move things along, I have presented you with a handout, and excuse me if I read it, but it will go faster if I do. So my request is to develop a policy governing the use of town assets, that would be equipment, supplies, vehicles, facilities and labor used by town employees, organizations and the public. The background is recently, there have been questions raised within our community and at the board and committee meetings regarding who is authorized to allocate town assets for other than official town activities. Questions arise as to whether or not the use of town vehicles is captured in an employee's benefits package, who may access town facilities for automotive maintenance, repair of a private vehicle, whether or not IRS regulation governing reimbursement for mileage is required when vehicles are used for town business. These increases involve what one concerned citizen recently expressed to this board as a question of adequate transparency within our town government. I think that the last agenda item was likewise directed at that rather than any one individual. In my research on this issue, I found that some towns have specific personnel policies while many others do not. Some of the towns with non-specific personnel policies address this issue as a general statement in their code of ethics. The following are examples of both. Town of Gorham Municipal Employees Personnel Policy, section 3.5, Town Property. Employees must not directly or indirectly use or allow the use of town property of any kind for other than official activities. Town telephones, cell phones, computers, et cetera, may be used for personal business only on an emergency basis. Two, Town of Kennebunkport Code of Ethics Policy, Use of Town Equipment, Supplies and Services. The town's resources are provided for official town business and will not be used for personal business. Occasional, but not frequent, use of town email accounts for personal use and telephones for personal calls is permissible. However, no public official or employee shall use town property, services or labor personally, and I believe I find this the most important part of this, or make them available to others except if such use is available to all residents and on equal terms. In my research, I accessed the Town of Raymond website and found the code of ethics for appointed and elected municipal officials. I'm on the zoning board of appeals, so Louise has me sign those, although I am not always right on time. Item nine states, I will refrain from using the board position for personal or partisan gain and avoid any conflicts of interest or appearance of impropriety. So that's the degree that I could find of anything being spoken of either in personnel policy or in code of ethics. And the code of ethics was specific for elected or appointed town individuals. My research of the Raymond site did not produce any ethical statements concerning town employees, nor did I find any specific policies involving the use, prohibition or limitation of use of town resources by employees, organizations or the public. My conclusion, a specific policy procedure governing the use of town assets would be useful in clearly defining the municipal authority responsible for oversight and accountability. This policy may be as liberal, moderate or conservative as the municipality chooses. However, the continued absence of any policy will most likely lead to further public concerns involving the use of town assets. So once again, I am not directing this at any one or group of individuals. These are my personal opinions based on my observations in the conduction of town government in Raymond over the last couple of years. And I think it does go back to that term transparency. So if you want to send that message clearly, then what you will do is, I guess the word of the month has been codify, you want to codify this in some sort of a policy. My research shows that almost, everything I looked at as far as not-for-profit or governmental agencies includes in their personnel policy some discussion on the use of town property. It may be that I just don't have access to those particular personnel policies, and I'll be happy to be corrected if they exist in the town. I couldn't find them. I also gave you just briefly, and this is timely, this was in the Bangor Daily News, February fifteenth, two thousand and thirteen, and this has to do with Holton passing new town-owned equipment regulations. So this is timely. And I highlighted a couple of things that just kind of jumped out at me. And this is one of the councilmen stating, he said he often receives calls from community members who were upset by town personnel who they thought were using town-owned vehicles improperly. And his statement is, it just looks wrong. My sainted Sicilian mother would tell me when I was a young boy that, you know, Peter, it just don't look good, you know? So I think that that would be a guiding type of a principle to use, in that it, you know, you just want to appear as if you're doing the right thing. I believe for the most part you are, as the town employees are. This makes it clear. It would make it clear in the policy who has the authority to authorize the use, and therefore that individual would be held accountable if there was misuse. So there has to be accountability if you're going to have any credibility. I think just the last thing I would say is this, and it kind of goes to my comments in general, when this was requested to be an agenda item several times, never was, there was discussion, but it was never an agenda item on it. The chair did respond to Selectman Levitt's request, and one of his statements, irrational for not putting this on the agenda was, the town manager has addressed your concerns and explained the allowed activities that were being observed at the facilities. And so I would just ask for a clearer definition of if in fact no policy exists, then what are the allowed activities? That'd be my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Teresa? Teresa?
Hi, Teresa Sadek, Webb's Mills Road. I guess I have a couple of questions, I guess, on clarification on that. When you talk about town-owned property, to me, that's the fire station, correct? Yeah?
Can I answer?
Yes.
Oh, I basically listed as town assets, and then I believe what I did is I ran down a definition of town assets. So it would be supplies, it would be vehicles, it would be labor, it would be, and I'm sure there must exist a policy on the use of the internet and emails. So I think if that policy exists, then that would be a start, but it's all owned by us, Teresa.
The town, right. Well, I guess, I guess what I'm saying is, like, we use it for, like, Christmas parties, we use it for tours, and so in that case, it would be a public thing that we could use it for. I mean, so in that case, I asked the fire station instead of asking Dawn, and maybe I should ask Dawn, because technically, when you're talking, I think to me on this policy is, it's kind of getting into the micromanaging, and you are, and this is just my opinion, this is, he's the town manager, so any concerns that the public would have should be addressed. You know, if they're addressed to a selectman or to another person in town, then they should be sent to the town manager to have him address them, instead of other people addressing them. And I, I don't see anybody else really coming forward with issues regarding town use. So to me. So to me, send them to the town manager.
Thanks Teresa. Can I comment on, on that? It's been, and Peter was right, twice it has come up as a request for, as an agenda item. And I thought I would put it on agenda so it could be aired this evening.
I think we do need a policy. I'm Julie Sullivan, Leach Hill Road, Raymond. I think we do need a policy about the equipment, the properties, the labor, et cetera. I had a horse put down. This is just an example. Dawn and I got a hold of an excavation company, friend of ours, had him come up. We paid to have her buried. I had her for nineteen years. Couple of weeks later, it was mentioned to me by a resident of this town. Why didn't you get a hole in Nathan White? He would have bought the town backhoe up and buried the horse for you. I don't think the town equipment should be used in that fashion. If I have to pay to bury my horse, then every other resident in this town should have to pay to bury theirs. If you're going to do it for one, for free, then all the residents have to have the same equal opportunity. I think we need a policy and I think the use of the equipment in the facilities have gotten way out of hand. I've witnessed a lot in the, almost three years that we lived here. So I think a policy is in order at this time.
I want to just, from one of your comments here, you brought up Nathan White. Is Nathan here? Do you're in the business of burying horses?
We've been asked. I've done one in twenty years that I've been here.
How long ago was that?
Ten years ago? A while.
This was just recent last fall.
No.
And it was mentioned. If you have to have your mare put down, let me know and I'll bring the backhoe up and bury it for you.
Who said that?
I'm not telling you.
Then you're providing hearsay.
It's not hearsay. It's from the longtime residents.
I don't believe any names should be used.
I'm not using names and I've kept names out of before.
It's actually have used names.
It has been mentioned to the town manager before.
He does nothing about it.
He does nothing about it.
Wait, 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 wait a minute here. Let's not get carried away.
Yes.
With what's been mentioned to the town manager, what's not been mentioned to the town manager, unless you know.
I know, face to face.
Yeah, face to face. You don't know.
With you before in your office, just as always, you ignore me. But we do need a policy because I do see a lot of misuse of equipment in facilities and offering to use equipment for different residents in the town. Leach Hill Road, it hasn't been ditched in thirty something years, but I see another road getting brand-new ditched.
Ms. Sullivan, I think you made your point. Thank you very much. Did you have something, Nathan?
Carrie Sullivan, Deep Cove, Raymond. Just for transparency's sake, I think we need to have a policy. I've belonged to a lot of organizations. I've worked, before I lived in Raymond, I've worked as selectman, was elected as a selectman in the town. And it avoids a lot of problems of people saying, "Well, if you know the right people, you can do this. If you don't know the right people, you'll never get anything done." If we have a policy that states whatever we determine should be the policy, then everybody knows what it is, there's something to go by. And if somebody does end up using, I'll use her example only because I can't think of one right now, but if one person does turn around and have their horse buried, buried with the town backhoe, then there's a policy in effect that will, that we can fall back on and say, "That was not proper and something can be done about it." If there's no policy, nothing can be done about it, nor does it look very well when we don't, when it looks like there's things, favoritism going on. I'm not saying there is, just it prevents it looking that way.
Thank you. Steve?
You know I had to come up. Steve Laney, sixty-six, Musson Road. Trust me, I'm, I have no examples, no names, but I have one question. I'm going to flip this around on. Give me, if you're not going to put in a policy, give me a good reason why not and what the benefit to the town is in not having a policy. I think there's, it's pretty obvious from a transparency perspective, but there's a lot of reasons why it'd be good. I want to hear what is the benefit to not having this policy? Thank you.
Thank you. Dawn, do you want to address that, please?
Well, there's many reasons, but one, one that comes right off the top of my head is the issue of small-town volunteerism. I think the chief and the former chief can speak to that. We have a number of people who come to the Public Safety Building. They give of their time. They are able to wash their vehicles, vacuum their vehicle. They have a policy, I guess it's a, not a written policy, but just an understanding at, at the fire department, that if they do that, they should also take some time and wash a town vehicle, do some maintenance on a town vehicle. But more importantly, what it does is it brings them, you know, into the Public Safety Building, which is an asset to the town when you rely on people who are giving of their time. Same is true of law enforcement. The law enforcement people who are not town employees are offered space in the Public Safety Building, lockers, a place to do that same sort of incidental work. Now, when it comes to, and I think this is the issue, because I have gotten a couple of complaints, let me tell you, a couple of complaints from a couple of people about this. And what we seem to have are a couple of people and I guess, you know, there's no prohibition for following the Public Works crew around, I guess, looking in the windows, seeing what they're doing, this sort of thing. And so have been some erroneous reports of, you know, various things that are occurring late at night or during the day or whenever, whenever they think, people think this is happening. But what has happened more often than not is that the Public Works Director is in the Public Works Facility, working on town equipment, keeping the town equipment operating with his own mechanics tools, which are, which he's provided for many years to the town. And so what has been given in exchange for his, use of his tools and his time.
Can I interrupt you real quick?
Pardon me?
Do we not have our, any tools ourselves?
We have very few tools ourself. I'll let Nathan specify that. Most of the tools are own tools by Mr. White. And so he does have the ability to change oil on his vehicle or, or do some incidental kind of work on his vehicle. I'm not going to argue with this.
Using his own supplies.
Using his own supplies and his own tools. And, and that is not, as, as Mr. Levitt indicated at the outset, I mean, if you were going to take the four hundred and eighty communities roughly in Maine and you could find four or five that have a policy, but you're going to find, you know, four hundred and seventy that don't, would, would a policy be a good thing? I, that's up to you, you folks. You know, I think the policy you have to have when they, when there's a policy in place is basically a prohibitive policy. And, and I think that'll require some adjustments in how Raymond has done business in a lot of ways. I think it will decrease volunteerism. I think it will have an effect on the morale. I think it will decrease the number of people who would come, law enforcement people would come to the town. I, I think it will have some effect on the morale of the, the town employees. Do I think for an instant there's anything wrong at the town garage? I do not. Because whenever I get any kind of a complaint, any, even the most minute complaint about misuse, I investigate it, I look into it. I, I think we've got a lot of things going on in this town, but we certainly don't have a problem with misuse of town equipment or any kind of an issue with Mr. White or any of his employees. That said, it's really, it's really your call. I think there's a lot of ramifications to this. It requires a, you know, significant amount of study. There are policies on things like, you know, use of the internet. We have that policy, we can provide that. But, but the garage policy has, has been something that's been around long before I was town manager. It's commonplace in, in most towns. Other examples are things like you can bring your vehicle in when it's snowing, you know, so when the trucks are plowing, the Public Works employees can put their vehicles in so that when they return from plowing, they can be in a, you know, a clear, clear vehicle. Now, towns with policies, they, they don't do that. I mean, I talked to Dennis about this, our former fire chief, and I learned that even the city of Portland has no prohibitive policies. Is that still correct as far as you know? So, so, so I mean, there's, there's a level of.
That is correct.
That is correct. Okay, so, but I, I mean, I can't argue. You can always, you can always feel some level of comfort from a policy, not argue the other side. Sure, prohibitive policy would, would give people who fear there's something going on, something terrible going on, it would give them some comfort and that would be something you could consider. But I think it will have some other, other issues associated with it with respect to the use of the, of the garage and, and the Public Safety Building and I don't, I guess the town office, I'm not sure what, how effect, what effect there would be there, but, but you'd have to have something that would tie it all together and I think it would have to address the issues that Ms. Sadek brought up as well, because we do have some community uses and other uses. And so it, it'd require quite a lot of thought, I think, to get something that would work all the way around, other than a prohibition.
Thanks.
Just want to make one clarification. I don't think that Peter or any, anyone here, this is a, this is a policy for town employees, so that wouldn't count volunteers, that wouldn't count law enforcement, it wouldn't affect all those other issues you brought up initially. I don't think it would hurt volunteerism, I think. So those people, I don't believe, are covered under most of these policies. Volunteers could still wash their cars, law enforcement would still come and do that. So I just want to make that, that clear, we're talking about policy for town employees.
You know, you, you, the policy is about using town assets.
Right.
That means anybody who uses anything the town owns, so.
Correct. I think it's public officials, employees, anyone, without a policy.
The town is us.
Isn't authorized.
So, so when you say a town asset, you're really talking about our assets, correct?
Correct. Chief?
Yeah, just to, to kind of put a couple of things in perspective, and Dawn hit on this.
You have to identify yourself.
Bruce Tupper, yes. Bruce Tupper Valley Road, actually, as a, as a citizen and the fire chief of the Town of Raymond. We, we do have the internet and email policies in place. Every one of our employees has to sign those when they, they get their passwords to log in, et cetera. So those are, those are something that are already in place. I guess to just address a few concerns and whether you're looking at this as making a limiting policy or just a general policy that gets, sets a guideline, we in the fire rescue department have that unwritten rule, if you will, where folks can come in and wash their vehicle, members can come in and wash their vehicle, the sheriff's office, any law enforcement entity that we deal with, state police, game warden service, et cetera. And of course, you, you can imagine the benefits from having law enforcement continuously in town or having some of our members in, in the building washing vehicles. Recently even, we had a, one of our members come in, he had some wiring issues on his boat trailer, so he was rewiring it with the help of another volunteer member or call member, if you will, of our department. We happen to have two calls during that time period. It boosted our response to those calls. So there are definitely some benefits there. I, I frequently, and I can add, I think I can address something for Nathan here and I, I don't want to jump in on, on your parade, but you know, when we get a flat tire on a Saturday or holiday or need brakes on the truck, I, I talk to Nathan and you go by his shop and you'll see him in there at ten o'clock at night and he's putting brakes on an ambulance. Or on a Saturday afternoon, he's repairing a tire for us so we can keep a truck in service. I think that a lot of the things that people might see really are just valid things that are going on and there is no impropriety. However, imaginations can run wild from time to time. I mean, hey, the guy's in there on a Saturday, he's got to be doing something wrong. However, I can attest to many occasions where he's been in there doing work on our vehicles to keep us in service. And likewise, he's also been in our station at, at ten o'clock at night some nights doing works on our, on our trucks in our stations. So sometimes those things do occur. And yes, our members do come in and wash their vehicles and do a little bit of light maintenance on vehicles. They're not using department supplies. They have to clean some of our fire trucks first. They have to wash a truck or evacuate. They must clean up their area that they're working in. And those are all part of our SOPs and SOGs. If they don't, they very quickly do not, or are not allowed to use that space anymore. We're not afraid to pull the plug on that. So I guess if you want to say there isn't a policy, there, there really is in that respect. The, the use of the building inside, we're, we're one of those entities that parks our vehicles inside. And people might think, wow, that's a pretty good benefit to have vehicles heated. It's only during a storm and really the reason for it is, is that the Public Works crew can come in and plow our parking lot completely unheated and get it done twice as fast, they're not working around vehicles. Our vehicles must be out of there as soon as the storm's over, as soon as the final plowing and sanding is done, they're out. If they're not and the guys run a call, the keys are in the vehicle, we put them out for them and that happens very frequently. Reality in the fire side of things is that, you know, for a few pennies a day in soap and water, a couple of vehicles are getting washed, it provides extra folks when there's a call, provides law enforcement, game wardens, et cetera, when they need them. So I, again, if you put a policy in place, that's, that's up to you guys, but I would urge you to not make it a restrictive policy in this respect. Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Yeah, if I could just make one follow-up question or, or a statement, that'd be, I don't necessarily, necessarily agree with the town manager that this has to be prohibitive in any way. I don't believe in my presentation, I suggested that. I believe what I said is you can be as liberal as you want to be or as severe as you want to be. I would not suggest that you be severe. Certainly, I support the volunteers in the town. I guess it comes back to the question that was asked before. What is the harm in having this policy and assigning accountability? And in fact, the few towns maybe, and, and believe me, Dawn, it's more than five, but, but the, the, certainly the minority of towns in the state of Maine have these policies. You might find some of them, however, as I did, under their code of ethics. Because, once again, you can't say transparency enough and ethical actions, accountability. I think these are all reasonable requests and I need to be convinced, I guess for myself, that there is a real reason not to do that here. And I would suggest to you, that's similar to the last agenda item, where I had a request for a specific condition. Generally, you don't get policies, especially in towns in our size, until there is complaints, until there is a perception that is negative. If you didn't get any calls, Mr. Manager, I would have a hard time standing up here now. But you do get calls. And, and therefore, excuse me, and therefore, I am once again baffled at the reluctance of, of the board to move forward with reasonable requests. And I guess I would, I would just say lastly, in listening to the recent Budget Finance Committee meetings and, and hearing this, this statement that you just have to trust in our town government. Well, I do trust in my town government. What I don't like to see is my town government taking hits that it doesn't need to take if you look at things such as transparency and accountability. Thank you.
Can I just answer? To clarify, I did say prohibitive because that's the policies, the very few policies and the rare instances that towns have policies, that's what they are.
I would share some with you, Dawn, I guess.
Well, the ones I've seen, okay? So I, I wouldn't, you may find some that are, that are, that are not prohibitive, but it's very difficult, is all I'm saying, to write something that isn't prohibitive. And, and I would tell you, the other, the other thing that really, that really concerns me about this whole thing, because I do take such concerns very seriously, is in the few instances, a couple, two, three instances of it's the same individuals making the same complaints, and when I look into it, it's the same result. And so it strikes me as something other than transparency. Frankly, at some level, it strikes me as harassment.
Brian Walker, Rolf Road. As I'm listening to this, I hadn't planned on getting up, but it seems to me that there's a couple of things that kind of come to mind. One is, there's, the word transparency's come up a lot tonight. I think a lot of this has to do with trust. And we either have trust in our government or we don't. And clearly, there are some who do not, and I respect the fact that they don't have that. I think the vast majority of people in this town do have trust for the government. And I think what trust allows is flexibility. We are a small town. Anytime you have a policy, if you're going to have a policy that's effective, it has to be enforced. Enforcement takes time and effort. So to the questions that were raised about whether or not, why would you not have a policy? A policy, especially as it becomes more restrictive, takes time and effort to enforce or to explore accusations of wrongdoing. So this might be one of the reasons why we might not want a restrictive policy. A general policy, perhaps that's something that the, the board can think about doing. I would be concerned about making sure that as a small town, that any policy still allows for the flexibility of a small town. You've heard today from a number of people tonight, from the towns, the, the town managers, the people that we're entrusting with our government. And as I listen to the utilization. and as I listen to the utilization of some of the town assets, it seems to me that those are all very rational reasons, and as a owner of those personally, I believe that those are the kinds of things that I would like to have done, I think the idea, it makes total sense to me, that a town employee should be able to drive their truck in while the roads are getting plowed, it makes sense for them, it's after a rough day of plowing, to get into a warm vehicle's a nice thing, but more importantly, gets it out of the parking lot so you can plow, it makes total sense, if you create a restrictive policy, suddenly, that's not going to be allowed, because you are not going to be able to write a policy with all of these exceptions of things that are logical things, I think the washing of vehicles makes total sense, and by the way, when you see how some of the townspeople, the town employees work, to give them some kind of a small perk, I don't think is that big of a challenge, I happen to trust that they do and use their best judgment, and therefore, I don't have, I don't have, what I have seen over the past couple of months, including people running into meetings with hearsay, is mostly hearsay about the issues that are being brought up, we're a small town, let's keep the flexibility, if we want to have some kind of general policy, I'm fine with that, but I would really urge us to keep it very general, and let the towns' employees use their best judgment, let's trust them.
Thank you, Brian.
Dennis Morse, Anderson Road, again, Raymond, I did see, and work in Portland, and see a lot of different things, the garage were used for minor things as well as major things, when I got to Raymond, and we started to build, we didn't have a problem with parking cars in stations when I got here, there was no room for the trucks, that's the fact, we had to pull the trucks out, open compartments, so we started to do things like move the town forward, in a way that was probably not acceptable to some, but the majority ruled at a town meeting, when the building was built, we had a training room that was large enough, like this room, to be used for the public, and we sat down, and I endowed a policy, and the policy was really geared towards making it open to the public as best as possible, cleaning policy, who could get it, and how to book it, we didn't really discriminate against anyone, in my knowledge, I think what we did is said the town owned it, as you've heard from several people, they own everything, all the citizens own everything, just ask a few people, and they'll tell you, what is interesting, though, is they weren't there to clean it, they weren't there to help design it, we did the best we could, in the fire service for 80 years, we had something called standard operating procedures, these were policies put in place that you couldn't vary from, it was used against many, many departments, so nationwide, we decided, as a entity, that GOPs, guidelines, they were put in place that basically said, this is what you should do under certain circumstances, which is what Brian just said earlier, guidelines, when I built, when I built, when we built as a town this public facility, I spoke at the town meeting, and I said, we're going to have a wash bay, we're going to have a wash bay, and we're going to invite public safety people, and state police, and county, and inland fishery, and anyone else, and it's going to be open to them, and they're going to have a code to get in, we're going to actually open the door for them, and it's been so successful that when New Gloucester opened their station, they have a wash bay for them too, Naples changed over how they did business, inland fishery now has an office in their building that they don't charge for, we weren't trying to make it hidden, I mean, it was pretty transparent to say, you can have a wash bay, and Don didn't believe it was going to happen quite the way we said, and this town manager, we come in there at 11 o'clock one night, and there was, I don't know, two cruisers in the bay, and a state cop waiting to get in, and he said, I can't believe that they're here, they came here, they also found out while this process was going on, that we really are the center of Cumberland County, if you were to measure and to see, and they now, Cumberland County now does a officer change out during their daytime, nighttime changeover in this town, they now use District Two, you know, to be transparent, they go in there, and they have a code, and they have meetings in there, and they actually use the table up there, they find it to be discreet, and a great place to go, in our town. The policies I changed, I have to tell you, and I'm a policy guy, was when the town manager or the selectman got a complaint from the public, I said I would respond within that week to their home or their business to answer the complaint, just put it in writing so it wouldn't be hearsay, I'm tired of hearsay, the first year I was here, I answered more hearsayed questions and complaints than you can imagine, since the written policy, you know, transparency on who's complaining, where they sign something and say what the complaint is, I think there was two complaints in the last three years, and one of them, we actually did a measurement on where the truck was when they reported, and where they got to the call, and we found that that person broke the speed limit, and we disqualified him, we did it internally, and we did it because it's important that the public feel safe in this town, and that we're doing our job, I'm not opposed to policies that really, they really do kind of give you the guidelines, and I think when you say we shouldn't have a policy, or we don't need a policy, it opens the door for people to say we're not transparent, even though they don't like to use names, my statement is this, let each department figure out how it works right now, it seems to be working, there's not that many complaints, come back and review the thing, put it forward in a way that allows the same types of things that are going on, so that all doubts are removed, and I don't think, I don't think it's going to hurt Public Works, I think if people knew what Nathan did, they'd want him to have a raise instead of freeze his wage, my point is, whether it's two people or 20 people, if the concern's there, and we can make it more transparent, I'm all for it, I would also ask, and I'll probably come forward with one of these policy where when we get the complaints, people sign them, so we know how many people out there are upset, it's going to help you in the future, it's going to help the department heads, and all in all, I give a lot of credit to the people who do come up with the concerns, I think it's important to hear them, there's nothing wrong with tweaking something, I'll give you one more example before I step down, we used to burn buildings in this town, and when you have a selectman or someone on a board who does planning, and they ask you to burn the building, training exercises, we just used to do it, you know, we used to just do it for whoever called, we'd sat down and come up with a policy, and it cost money, and it had some transparency, that we'd do it for anyone who asked, but it costs this amount of money, and you have to do this to do it, it got much smoother, it became a straightforward thing, so there's nothing wrong with guidelines, there's nothing wrong with people coming in and saying we should have guidelines, but I think it should serve the purpose of what we're doing, and that's what I would ask you to do, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a clarification on what I said?
Yes, ma'am.
I said that I, Carrie Sullivan from Deep Cove, I said that I felt we needed policy, I think I used the wrong word, because I agree, it should be more like a guideline, but it's got to be public, so everybody knows what the guidelines are, I have nothing wrong with the volunteers going into the safety building and washing their cars, or I forgot his name, but whoever does the work, using his, the building to work on his vehicle, because we're using his tools, there's nothing, I have nothing wrong with that, I, and I personally have not seen anything that I'm complaining about, I just feel that it's important to have public guidelines, that everybody knows they exist, and we can see that everything is above board, I happen to trust the majority of our government, and but I think that we do need to have guidelines, that people can see that we are doing things right.
Thank you. Yes, Joe.
Here's the problem when you put things in policy, someone like Nathan, who works almost 24 hours a day in the wintertime, if he's stopping at Good Life Market to get a cup of coffee, is that personal, or is that on work time, in the middle of the night? And you could say, well, that's personal, here's the policy that says you can't use it for personal time, I mean, that's what you run into, I think the solution to this is have every department come up with guidelines of what people can do and not do with town assets, and we don't need a policy, but every department should have guidelines.
I think that's an excellent idea, and following up on what Dennis said, what you've just said, and I think that we ought to require written complaints, because, you know, I've chased a lot of bogus information, there's been a lot of information from some folks right in this room, stand up in a public meeting and make what amounts to a gross misrepresentation without facts, to say things that are untrue, to try to damage people's reputations, which I think crosses the line, and is inappropriate, and I think anything like that should be in writing, that's what I think, and be investigated, and any actions necessary be taken.
Can I make a motion that we allow department heads in this town to come up with guidelines on use of town assets?
Second, yes. Second?
Absolutely.
Comment. Charles?
First of all, let me, I'm glad there's a motion on the floor, because I feel much more comfortable discussing it, and we've heard, as much as we've heard transparency in this town, we've also heard negativism, I haven't been called a nattering nabob of negativism since Sparrow Agnew had to resign in disgrace as Vice President of the United States, because I opposed with a minority unpopular opinion about the war in Vietnam, when we continually hear words like stalking and peeking in windows and doors, I think that's the negativism that, there's plenty enough to go around on both sides of an issue, because I've heard that term, stalking in particular, in reference to citizens who have come forward and asked, just asked a question, not made an accusation, and, please, thank you, I'll get to that, with all due respect, Mr. Walker, when the citizens of this town pay their taxes, they pay it with this, and on the back of it, it says, in God we trust, that's who we trust in, everyone else is accountable, so let me try to make that absolutely clear, when we try to present something as people are being nasty and mean, and they don't trust, it actually is people are asking for transparency for a reason, they want fairness, they want justice, they want, for instance, and this was given to me, this lead by Mr. Willard, from Ruth Cushman, Town of J, I like the opening statement, the buildings, equipment, supplies, materials, reputation, and status of the town belong to the citizens, that's a good way to start, when we talk about flexibility, unless expressly authorized, no person may use town facilities, equipment, supplies, materials, or resources for his own personal use, or benefits, or profit, or authorize such use for the personal or commercial use or profit of others, except as is generally available to the public, so I don't know what people think about guidelines and policies, you can debate that all day long, I think what is being asked is that we put something in place that is better than what we've had before, so if I may, because other people have had the floor, let me just give a quick chronology of these events, on September 15th, 2011, and I never anticipated governing would be this difficult, an email from myself to Mr. Willard, I requested if a policy existed, Mr. Willard replied, no reply, no policy, on October 11th, 2011, at the Board of Selectmen meeting, I again, under Selectmen Communication, requested a discussion in the future, not right now, just in the future, of the possibility of a policy on employee use of vehicles, equipment, town-owned assets, October 25th, 2011, email, Mr. Levitt to Mr. Willard, what is the status of my request to review in light of the Portland Fire Boat situation, now Dennis, you all, you knew this situation as well as anyone, and shame on Portland that they still don't have a policy, because it made the front page of the Sunday Telegram, and I, so I don't think, when people were out riding around in the Portland Fire Boat, that that was made up, and it didn't, it didn't, didn't at least bring to this town's attention, small town or not, in God we trust, in government we expect accountability, Mr. Willard to Mr. Levitt, the Portland Fire Boat has nothing to do with Raymond, to answer your direct question, both unfounded and based upon cynical anecdotes, the chair, which at the time was Mr. Bruno, has instructed me not to proceed with your suggested policy, November 22nd, 2011, the Board of Selectmen meeting, I officially request a policy review under Selectmen Communications, and this is all because I'm accused of revisionist history, I've spent a lot of time reviewing old DVDs, more than I should, I should be home, working in my yard, however, Mr. Willard replies, it is not needed, because the only use is for volunteers and employees to wash their cars, and employees parking their vehicles inside during snowstorm shifts, he also stated, Mr. Levitt is accurate, because in my email, I mentioned the response I had received, Mr. Levitt is accurate, that this request was characterized as unfounded and cynical, and he has mischaracterized the discussion, is grandstanding for the audience, and is a performer, and I thank you for that, that's actually, in some circles, that would be high praise, as a selectman, I don't consider myself a performer, or grandstanding, I recommend no policy, so have a nice evening, my comment was, human nature is human nature, small town or not, that's, I just added that, and we should study it, because human nature is human nature, this was the last meeting with Selectmen Communications on the agenda, and I think many of you remember the history of, from Selectmen Communications to public communications, and the legal expenses we went through to try to make these deliberative decisions on the ability to speak freely, which I am now, thank you, December 5th, 2012, I request information on selectmen receiving goods and services of non-town-owned, of non-town and vehicles, non-town-owned vehicles at the town garage, it was a request for information, I have the email, it wasn't accusatory, December 6th, I received a reply, two selectmen have received some roadwork and materials, along with two other cases, employee use, this is in an email from Mr. Gifford to Mr. Willard, and then to me, employee use of town garage has been raised in the past by Selectmen Levitt, there are currently no town policies prohibiting occasional light repair, so now we've changed from washing and parking to occasional light repair, use of the town garage facility, at one of these sessions, it was brought up again about the morale question, and about volunteers, and I think when we talk about flexibility in a policy, when you use language like, unless expressly authorized, that leaves a lot of room, it makes one person accountable, in this particular case, I would suggest it would be the town manager, not the departments, doing departments is like trying to regulate the oil pipeline state by state, it's not going to happen, it's either, it's either going to be a policy for all, or it won't be a workable guideline for anyone, so we've asked for a review, it's on tonight's agenda, which I am finally thankful for, it's only been two years that we're having this discussion, I'm sure there's more to discuss, I don't expect a policy or a decision to be made tonight, I certainly don't recommend it being left to a guideline for each department to come up with, this is serious in terms of fairness and equity, that's what people expect from our government, that's what I think is the attempt here, I would vote against this motion, because it doesn't get to the root, it actually probably creates more of the confusion that some of the speakers have said they're trying to avoid, it'll create more work, because each department will have, one department for Louise, and one issue for Louise, and one issue will be for Nathan, and one will be for another employee, it's, we're all in this together, we're one government, it's not an unreasonable request, Mr. Willard has also stated, in the last car- Mr. Willard has also stated, in the last correspondence that I had on this, February 22nd, 2013, to Ralph Olson of the Budget Finance Committee, "It occurred to me last night that in the event the issue of the PWD garage use policies come up again during budget discussions, staff did complete a telephone survey of our peer group in neighboring towns." So again, knowing this was on the agenda, I was surprised not to have found that telephone survey in my packet, but I guess I, my expectations are sometimes too high. "To determine if any of them had formal garage use policies," I suppose if you get it down to a garage use policy, you might not find it, but if you go into codes of ethics like Bridgestone, you will find it's located in the code of ethics policy, "to govern incidental personal off-hours used by town employees, public safety volunteers and law enforcement officers." This is the one that really gets me. "This was done in response to a telephone call to me from Lake Region's Weekly Reporter, John Ballantyne, in early February, seeking information on this topic and related to a request for an investigative story by Mr. Levitt." Well, to quote Mr. John Quinn from the New England Oil Council, wrong, wrong, wrong. And I, I would be sorry to sit here and be embarrassed for the Town of Raymond if the way we legislate is through John Ballantyne at the Lake Region, Region, Weekneed, I mean weekly. Support, supported by comments from Mr. Linnae. "Our survey did not identify any towns with written policies. I believe Mr. Ballantyne also interviewed other local public officials and may have concluded, as have the other Selectmen, that this is really a non-issue in Raymond and elsewhere as no story has yet appeared." So if this is the basis of how we're running our government, I think we have a bigger problem than employee use policies. We have a, we have a problem about respect. We have a problem about how we are doing our business. Again, if you go to almost any private sector company and you're given a vehicle, it wouldn't be just, you can have the vehicle drive any way you want when you're not using it for town purposes. It just wouldn't exist. Go ahead and take it, no problem. Take it up to Moosehead, take it for a ride. We don't have any policy on it, so there's nothing we can do about it. It doesn't, it doesn't exist. Or go ahead, take the backhoe home with you, that's all right. It's not fair and that's the issue. It's about accountability and that's what I think the other Mr. Levitt was asking.
Thank you, Mr. Levitt.
Wow, that, that amazing speech and, but I'm telling you, folks, you know, this is my life, this is my career. I think folks hopefully can see the personal animus that Mr. Levitt has towards me and that's what this is about. I'd be happy to talk with anybody about anything relative to the Town of Raymond government. You can take emails out of context, you can make, you know, statements as he's had and make anything look the way that you want it to look, but we have dedicated employees who care about their jobs. I'm one of those people. Nathan White is one of those people. I don't frankly know what motivates Mr. Levitt, but I, I, I just don't understand this and I can, I can tell you that some of the things that have been said and the positions he takes and the ways that he acts are hurtful.
Thank you, Dan. This is becoming an argument and it's over with.
We have a motion.
We have a motion. And a second. Any further discussion? Would you, reading on your motion or?
Didn't write it down, but off the top of my head. It's a motion that department heads in the Town of Raymond come up with guidelines for employees on use of town assets.
Second.
Thank you.
That was seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Opposed? Thank you. Four to one. My sweater's catching on fire. It's the way you're staring over here, my sweater was catching on fire. Did I do something wrong?
Remember when this town used to be a nice place to come listen to people's different sort of opinion?
Next issue.
That wasn't nice.
You haven't been for years.
Excuse us, please. Let's move on. Next issue, the review and possible adoption of fiscal year 2013-14 municipal budget. And I will leave this to you as I did in the most recent meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Looking at the budget alternatives that were placed in front of us, I think we're getting very close to being where we want to be. If you look at alternative five on your budget, we're only $37,368 away from being under LD1, which is the goal that we're shooting for as a Select Board. I think we can get there. One of the suggestions that, if I may speak for the Chair, he has volunteered to give up his stipend as a Selectman. So there's another $1,200 that we found right there. So that gets us down to $36,168, I believe.
Let me, let me first of all just interrupt you for a moment, Joe. Excuse me, but I want to make it clear that I do not receive that stipend now. That stipend is.
A pass-through. It's a pass-through.
It's a pass-through, absolutely. It goes to the Raymond, uh, right now.
Beautification.
Beautification Committee. Thank you, I'm sorry.
Can we, we're trying to have a budget hearing, please? And I've been given this a lot of thought about how do we get, find $36,000 more? And I think there's a couple of things that we could look at. One of the things I, I thought about was under the excise tax line, we increased it by $10,000 last time. You know, the report came out today, the car sales are up 5% over last year just for the month of March. Maybe we could be a little more optimistic and add another $10,000 to that line and that gets us to $740,000. When I look at the CIP account, you know, part of it is that we're looking at giving $400,000 to fund this year's CIP. Is it possible that the $110,000 dump truck can be had for $100,000 if we negotiate it correctly? So that gets you another $10,000 and I think that gets us down to about $12,000 at that point. I don't know, you know, we got a new ambulance last year for $165,000. We have it for $180,000 in this year's CIP. Can we squeeze $15,000 and get another ambulance for $165,000?
Where we just bought the cardiac monitor for that, we can probably take $10 off it comfortably, but we were hoping to put the stretcher in for it, which is needed. So I think you could probably go.
So you only give up $10,000?
You can give up $10,000.
Okay, so that gets us down to, well, just about $6,000 left, is that right Nancy? I haven't written anything down, I'm just going off the top of my head here. And I think for $6,000, I would probably turn to the town manager and say, "Find me $6,000." I think when you look at the CIP, I looked at the revenue control report from today and let me go find it here. There's a lot of paper here. When you look at the, let me make sure I'm on the right one. I think I was looking at the municipal town hall CIP. I think you've set aside $35,000, yet you've only expended 13 this year. Can we just carry over, you know, $5,000 from that account into next year's budget?
Joe, isn't that for mold though? And they're going to do that this spring and summer?
I'm trying to find it here. Was that for mold though?
Nathan's, Nathan can address it.
Yes, leftover for mold abatement and some repairs to the town office. I don't expect to expend all that money. I think the quote came in around $13,000 if I remember correctly for the mold abatement.
And if I remember, you have $22,000 left in that account.
Correct.
So if you can do it for 13, that solves our budget problem.
Well, if we, if we run into a problem, we'll carry it over to the next fiscal year because that's a carryover account.
Right.
We'll do it after July 1st.
Yeah. So, and that gets us to under LD1. Those are my thoughts. I mean, yeah, I'm open to other suggestions.
We had $6,500 put away for a voting machine we're not going to be using.
Well, I don't know that that is, you mean for this coming election? You're going to rent one, right?
Well, that's to be discussed, but, but no, we, we had $6,500 put away to buy a new voting machine, which we're not going to be doing because the state's leasing them for us now.
Okay. So there's $6,500.
Right there.
So you don't even have to take away the town hall money, you can do it with the voting machine. But those are my thoughts. I'm, you know, I'm open to other suggestions, obviously.
Those, those numbers you just spoke of, total 37.7, so you're over by 400 bucks or under by 400 bucks, depending which way you look at it.
Yes, Charles?
Yeah, I guess I had a series of questions before we, we get into the iterations between proposal number one, the base proposal and proposal number five. These are still outstanding questions. On March 11th, Nancy, you were, you were to meet with the liability and vehicle insurance carrier and we were hoping to be able to reduce that line from possibly the $40,000. I think Mr. Bruno looked at a higher deductible. Is that a no?
They're expecting increases this year of between 10 or 12, 12 to 13 or something like that.
Yeah, I thought, that was the answer at the last meeting, I'm pretty sure.
Well, 10 to 12, we were at $28,000, so that's 2,800, 10 to 12 percent. Now, we're at 40, we're at a $12,000 increase. It can't be all just because of vehicles.
No.
Workers' comp?
Because of nationwide.
No, no.
Actually, our increase is less than what they're expecting nationwide.
So I guess I still can't get from 28,000 to 40,000 with those figures.
We're already at like 36 this year. We were more rebudgeted for 12, 13, less than we're actually spending.
So the 28,000 you have here is actually 36,000, then with the, with the increase, it goes to the 40.
And why, why were we over then? That wasn't because of an increase in premium, that was because of loss ratio?
That's possible, I don't know why.
If you, if you look at the appropriation control report, we're over by 8,800 right now, we're at 132 percent.
Yeah, and I guess the question is why? Because we have a set premium, so why are we over?
Budgeted too little. We didn't, no one's going to increase that much.
There's the outstanding question on the tower fund legal fees. Hopefully we have an answer on that tonight. I mean, I know it was speculated by Mr. Reynolds that he had the answer, but I'd like that official answer tonight since it came up a week or so ago.
What's the question?
The legal fees, what are portion of the 900,000 for the Crown Castle land purchase? That's 900,000. How much of that is going to, number one, were legal fees included in that 900,000? Is the Crown Castle paying those fees?
Legal fees are not included in that.
Okay, and how much of those fees? Just an approximation.
I'm looking at the numbers, I've been working with Peter from them.
So we still don't even have a, an approximate?
Well, we're finalizing, they're finalizing the contract, so I asked for it after they finalized the contract. So, because you guys will be, should be hearing that within the next few weeks, so.
Okay. That's, we don't know. We don't know if we're going to have a net of 850,000 or a net of 825,000.
Well, we budgeted, well, I think last week or last, whatever it was, we threw out the number 50,000.
Right, right. And I, I guess I was hoping to have something.
I don't believe it's going to even approximate that, but.
Yeah, but I mean, you don't know and you won't know until it's passed the town meeting because it's going to be final contract, it's not going on.
To get to Mr. Bruno's question, Nate, what kind of, what kind of truck are we buying? I just, I know we went from 190,000 to 110 fairly rapidly, so I.
190,000 was on the original CIP when you were asked what we thought we needed or what we perspected we're going to purchase. That was a truck fully equipped with plow gear. 100,000 I'm asking for now is for as close to a new truck as we can get, single, a wheeler dump truck, 14-yard dump truck.
14-yard?
14-yard. We have eight-yard dump trucks right now, we're going to move up to a 14.
Six-wheeler, 10-wheeler?
10-wheeler.
10-wheeler, gross vehicle weight?
Uh, I think the 56,000, somewhere in that area.
And who can drive that?
Anybody with a Class B license.
And so that's everyone?
Everybody on the crew.
Class B, so we can't drive trailers, but we can drive.
You need a Class A to drive a trailer.
Okay. But this is, so anyone in the department can drive a wheeler?
You have to have a Class B license to come to work here.
Okay. Okay, great, I needed to, so we're now not anticipating buying a new one, we're going to try to just.
I got a quote on a new one, it was like 96,000 and change, that's where I came up with 110,000 budget. And the 9, 190,000 came from an advertised price from HP Fairfield on a truck with plow gear on it. I'm anticipating to be a new truck, I would like to think would be under 100. I would actually be more inclined to find a late model used one, a couple-year-old one.
And 14 yards, what are we, we're having our sand delivered from P&amp;K.
Uh, no, actually, no, we, we go out to contract on the sand delivery now. And that includes our trucks hauling. Getting material to the job site, obviously it's twice as much as a single axle truck, so you're going to haul twice as much material for about the same fuel. And if we're going to go out and spend that much money for what little bit more a wheeler is, I felt that that was a better, better deal. A single axle truck's going to be in your 90, into the 90s just for a single axle truck with an eight-yard body.
And we do have a, we do haul 14 yards often enough?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, right now, if we're going to do a cross cover, we spend the first, the day before hauling material to the job site. Where, I mean, you're going to shorten up, you're going to cut your loads in half, your trips in half.
Okay, great. I, I just, because that number had changed so drastically.
Yeah, the original number was a wish list. At the time, we were at negotiations with P&amp;K and they were trying to give us back 10 miles of road, so we were looking, if we're going to buy a truck, set it up with plow gear so you get a little bit more sanding capacity and you can take the 10 miles that they wanted to give back to us.
If I may then, continue on because, I'm sorry I had to step out for a minute, but I'm assuming, Mr. Bruno, you, you started with proposal number five?
Yeah.
And let me start off by saying, creating a responsible budget that addresses public need and ultimately creates a tax levy on the citizens is probably the single most important function of government. We all take this responsibility seriously because as they say in the private sector, no margin, no mission. So it's very, the, the trust that people put in us, and we're not God, is that we're going to take their tax money and we're going to spend it reliably and with accountability. I have seen now over this budget season, as we fought tooth and nail to get more discussion on these budgets and to have it as clearly presented as possible, it's still similar to trying to find the pea under the shell or a $4 million game of Where's Waldo? Because anyone who doesn't follow how these five proposals have come forward and have changed the numbers, we've now gotten down to a point where we're focusing on alone getting under LD1 and not seriously looking at how much money that we're putting into the CIP that we all, or at least myself, thought the direction from the public was, they wanted our attention focused on the roads. Now, I had put together a proposal that used that tower money. Now, I had put together a proposal that used that tower money for the roads, which then would have freed up some of the bonding space in order to deal with the potentials of public safety and the public works CIP increases. However, in proposal five, that's pretty much flipped on its head, so that now we're dealing with equipment instead of roads. So, every individual involved in these budget negotiations has contributed a piece to this framework. Uh, Mr. Olson has suggested a means by which we may shift some valuation burden to the TIF. Mr. Bruno has proposed a two-part approach to our bonding needs, and Mr. Willard has rightly identified that occasionally, when budgets are managed and disciplined, it is appropriate to use the undesignated fund balance, not as a gimmick, but as a dividend. Steve Winay has studied the functions in the departments of the town, and has suggested improvements in data collection and accountability, and Dana DeJardins has steadfastly maintained the independence of the elected Budget Finance Committee. And all of this has taken place since February fifteenth, in a short seven weeks, where to the point, tonight, we're discussing, and I certainly hope we're not voting on, uh, any proposals tonight. Taken as a whole, these joint deliberations have created a roadmap fiscally reasonable and responsible in a budget resolution. Since February fifteenth, although there was criticism that some of us were squeezing and nickel and diming this budget, the administration has come back with over fifty-one thousand dollars of reforecast savings and/or revised revenue projections. So again, the devil is in the details. The five and dimes add up. An additional thirty-one thousand is shifted off budget to the TIF, this was Mr. Olson's, uh, idea, where an additional seventeen thousand dollars can be realized, and we'll talk about the TIF later. But initially, just from proposal number one, if you deal with just the base proposal, which was the wish list proposal, we were one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars over LD one. Every other iteration since then has just been a cross-weaving find the pea. So, I'm simplifying it by going back to the base proposal, which was the wish list. With more precision and control, we have accomplished an eighty-three thousand dollar reduction from the original one hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar LD one override. That's pretty significant. An additional thirteen thousand in savings can come from agreeing on a consensus compromise, one and a half percent wage increase for employees. When a straw vote was asked between the Budget Finance Committee and the Select Board, it was split down the middle. Fifty percent of the people thought a one percent increase, fifty percent thought a two. I don't think it's unreasonable right now to say a one and a half percent increase is the consensus, and that, uh, alone saves eight thousand dollars off the original proposal number one. And a five thousand dollar reduction in the administration audit legal line. This is approximately how much the town spent last year to determine the limits of speech for selectmen, and maybe one or two other bylaws issues. So, I guess if you wanted to take Dennis' words, if I was nicer, we'd save the town five thousand dollars. The paving, uh, road reserve, which is now, in the first proposal, was set at two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, which we all agreed from the Road Improvement Study Committee, that that's where it should go, from two hundred and forty to two seventy-five, should be increased by two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars, because that's what the people in this town have said they want done right now. They want their roads fixed, and they don't trust us. And with good reason, because we've kicked this can down the road so many years, that the people are demanding we address the road problem. That would be two hundred and twenty-five thousand additional for paving, and forty thousand dollars for the bond certification, which we know by having to be certified by standing in pores or moody's is gonna cost us forty thousand dollars. Rather than roll that money into a bond and pay interest on it, which would be about four or five thousand dollars over ten years, take it now, out of the tower money, which would actually all go into the undesignated fund balance, and then come out and use it as an offset, not as a gimmick, but a dividend. The UFB will experience, as I said, an eight hundred and fifty thousand increase, and that's why I wanted that number, it's very important, in the early part of the fiscal year, at the completion of the Crown Castle land sale. We should then proceed with a one point eight million dollar bond request for the roads. Now, here's where the find the pea comes in. We spent six months. Town manager sat on the committee, the Public Works Director sat on the committee, they studied the issue of road improvements. They came back to us and said, give me two seventy-five thousand in my pavement maintenance reserve, and give us two million dollars. All of a sudden, as soon as the tap was opened up just a wee bit, saying we should use the revenue for what the people wanted, all of a sudden, the road bond became two hundred and sixty or fifty thousand dollars in the first year to jumpstart it, and a two million dollar bond. So you can see, the smoke and mirrors of, all of a sudden, after we studied this issue, came up with a reasonable approach, once it was determined that there might be some flexibility on using the money from Crown Castle, that request went up two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's, that's not the way business should be conducted. The Road Improvement Committee asked for two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars and two million dollar bond. If we give them an additional two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars this year to jumpstart the construction season, that bond going forward should be one point eight million dollars. First, what does this, okay, so what does this plan do? Oh, on a separate note. Oh, oh, let me go back. So, this proposal does both. It meets the, the requirements of the, the Road Improvement Study. Other than the already earmarked hundred and five thousand dollars for public safety and public works, we keep those, and they stay in effect. Thirty-five thousand dollars for public works, seventy-five thousand dollars for, for public safety, stays in their CIP equipment lines for this year. No other increases will be included in this budget for CIP. The future CIP request should be studied over the next year, as we have done with the roads, and a strategy developed for next year that could include a second bond request. That means we'll deal with the equipment purchases next year, let's deal with, with the business at hand, what we have studied over the past year and deal with the roads. I don't think anyone disagrees at this point that there are some capital improvement needs and equipment needs for the fire department and for public works, but that could use a little more study. And if you recall, in the first proposal, the way I read your budget request, your budget request for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, fourteen, which is this budget year, you asked for ten thousand for a generator, and two hundred and fifty thousand for a piece of land for the tower. Your actual capital improvement equipment request was in year, you only put it as two thousand fourteen, but if you read your chart appropriately, it's, your, your capital improvement request, or equipment request was for two thousand fourteen, fifteen, which is next year anyway. So I'm not doing anything that wasn't already proposed. Just in the process of proposal number two, number three, number four, number five, all, everything got shifted forward once it was determined that, oh, wow, we might be able to spend some of that Crown Castle money. Well, we're gonna spend it, we're gonna spend it on the roads first, and then we're gonna get back and study and come up with a second bond proposal, which was Mr. Bruno's concept, that maybe we were biting off too much at one time, and that even though the import of the low interest rate is what drove us wanting to go to a bond this year, and it actually drove my request to go further and maybe include capital equipment, was because of that driving concept, that the reason why we're bonding is because of low interest rates. I'm concerned that those low interest rates won't be in effect next year. Mr. Bruno believes they probably will be, from his research. So therefore, I'm willing to concede that point, but we will have an opportunity next year to really deal with, study a capital improvement equipment plan. On a separate note, we have seriously ignored our responsibility to our employees and our taxpayers regarding health insurance. We have cobbled together what appears to be a costly, catastrophic insurance program for employees, while institutionalizing outdated car share formulas. We need to do better. And as I suggested at Budget Finance Committee the other night, we, this is also due for study. After the Compensation Committee is done with its work, uh, we ought to be convening, uh, a health insurance study committee to really look at it. It's embarrassing. And I think Joe and I were both caught unawares when we found out that our plan really ended up amounting, even though we pay three thousand dollars of the deductible, it's a catastrophic insurance plan. And we've gotta do better. And so that's gotta be something that we look at next year, and it's certainly something we don't have to do this year. By using proposal one, incorporating just this philosophy I've put forward, what this plan does, and what does it mean to the bottom line? First, it reduces the original hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar LD one override by eighty-three thousand dollars to a one-time request to exceed, one-time request to exceed, not increase, which then gets built into the budget going forward, year after year, but a one-time request to exceed the LD one formula by seventy-eight thousand dollars. I have always maintained that if we provide the voters with a well-fought-out and considered plan, they would support us. Secondly, the projected, and this is from proposal number one, nineteen cent mill rate increase could be reduced to approximate, could be reduced in half to approximately ten cents. This may seem trivial, cutting that mill rate projection to ten cents instead of nineteen cents may seem trivial to some, but we have yet to hear from the state regarding revenue sharing, homestead, circuit breaker, and veterans exemptions, and from the RSU regarding the school side. So, I think we could sit here and try to go back and forth and flip from line item to line item, which is what all of these, both Budget Finance and the Select Board have been doing for the last seven weeks, and try to decipher four other different proposals, or we can go back to the base proposal, look at what concessions are possibly being made. One, when I started this process, I was totally against bonding. Now, I think my colleagues have convinced me that it's very possible that bonding may be a good strategy, not only for this year, but next year when we get into capital equipment. I was convinced that we should not ever exceed LD one. However, that's the reason why tabor probably wasn't a good idea. You do need flexibility in a policy. I don't think anyone here who's, who's been around long enough believes that the ten commandments aren't flexible. So, you do need some flexibility. And so, I've changed my mind, because I think that with a well-fought-out and considered plan, we could go to the voters and say, here's your increase from the town side, it's gonna be ten cents. We're gonna have our bonding, we're gonna take care of our roads, we're committed to the roads. We're gonna dump approximately four, five hundred thousand dollars into the undesignated fund balance, which again, if used as a dividend next year, will either pay for our first year of bonding for the roads and have some money left over for capital equipment purchases, combined with, um, possibly an additional bond issue. So, I hate to belabor this point, because we can sit here, as we did one night, until, I think it was eleven forty-five PM, trying to vet every little line item, every little, let's talk about this, and let's talk about that. We've done all that. This proposal is, let's look at the base, where we started, let's look at some strategic planning for the future, and let's, for the first time, take care of the roads, which we have all neglected, by going ahead, going forward with a package that allows us to jumpstart the construction season this summer, and then have a three-year, uh, plan in place for construction over the next three years. And I guess my only concern, and the only caveat, came at one meeting when, uh, Road Commissioner and Public Works Director Nate White was asked, because don't forget, we're still paying for the last road bond, which was only not even a million dollars, because I think it included, uh, uh, equipment purchase for, for fire. We're still paying for that, we're gonna still pay for that. So that was seven, well, five or six years ago, and we're still paying for it.
Yes.
Well, it was, yeah, but it expires, our cost doesn't expire until the end of next year, our payment plan for that. So we're still paying for the last time we did this. And my concern is, Nate, that at that time, when you were asked, uh, how did we do? And that was, I think we were at around two hundred and forty thousand for our maintenance, uh, uh, budget at the time, and it was three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year for construction. And you were asked, how did we do, and you said, uh, we had our hands full. Do you remember that? You said, we had our hands full spending and doing that, meeting the, the requirements of that road bond, and so, if, if I may, just finish. At two hundred and seventy-five thousand and two hundred and twenty-five thousand on top of that this year, that's a half a million dollars. I don't have any doubt that you can accomplish that half a million dollars. I'm a little bit more concerned with the first year of the bond at, well, what amount, would amount to six hundred thousand dollars plus two seventy-five.
Well, if you looked at the plan from the pavement management program that we put together, a good chunk of that's overlay, a good chunk of that bond is gonna be overlay money. And, uh, the roads are all ready, they're just gonna be swept and paved. The construction stuff is, uh, I can't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but it's not a lot. We've got a couple of roads left to construct, but we'd be doing that where they're doing the overlay.
But you, you, you see what I'm saying, though, is that next year, you would have close to a
Six, six hundred?
Plus, you'll have eight hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars over the next three years.
Correct. As I said, a good chunk of that's all overlay, it's ready to go.
Right.
And overlay is done by contract.
Correct. Pick up the phone, point at the road, and they go pave it.
And what about the, the last bond, was that?
The, the last bond, we did quite a bit of construction work on North Raymond Road, and, um, I think the rest of it went up on the backside of Mount Rose, there's a lot of construction in that work. And that's some of the overlays that we're gonna do on this next bond, is to cover up the stuff that we already done the construction work on. And it was a lot of work, it was, it was a lot of work. I'm, you'd be kidding, I'd be kidding you if I told you it wasn't, but it's what we do.
And so it's, it's a concern, it's not a complaint, it's not, uh, a performance appraisal, it's just that.
We're all set for this next one, the way it's set up, I think we're gonna be in good shape.
And so, with that vote of confidence, that's my proposal. And, uh, we can go from there and have a further discussion, I guess.
Mr. Chair. The only thing I take exception to, and what Mr. Levitt says, is that this is smoke and mirrors. We've had five, I think five budget meetings now, it's all been spoken publicly about options, and that's what you do when you develop a budget, you talk about options. You know, and I think we're, you know, option five to me is that we're getting to the point where I think we need to be. But to redo all the roads in Raymond, we're talking about a six million dollar project. That's where we're at. So, just because we're gonna have five hundred thousand dollars in the maintenance account, and try and pass a two million dollar bond, that means we're still three and a half million dollars short of what we need. So we need to have a plan in place to keep it going. If we're able to put five hundred thousand dollars a year into the maintenance account, that allows us to keep up over the next ten years with what we need to do. I don't understand the comment of smoke and mirrors, I, I just, it's all been discussed publicly.
No, no, smoke and mirrors, Joe, and the fact that, that we now have, we've, we've thrown almost all of the money from the original proposal, we're expending six hundred thousand of that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we're throwing that in for things other than roads.
Right, capital equipment.
Right, that has nothing to do with the roads.
Well, you're gonna, well, you're gonna have to buy capital equipment one way or the other, whether it's that dump truck, or whether it's a fire truck.
Agreed.
I mean, we're talking twenty-year-old equipment or older, so we need to replace it. Whether you spend it in cash upfront, or you bond it, you know, it all comes out of the same pocket at some point.
Right, but you don't do it all at once, even the road improvement. Even the Road Improvement Committee said, and I, I will go back to the data, they said that we'll need $2 million now, and by the time, by, before the end of that 10-year bond for this $2 million, we're going to need another $2 million.
Right.
There's nothing wrong with that. We're just saying, we're not going to throw up $6 million all at once, we're not going to throw all of our, our, uh, uh, UFB that is going to be bumped up because of the tower sale all in one year.
Right. That's, I agree with everything you're saying.
And that's what I mean by...
What's wrong with putting $500,000 into the road as the jumpstart, especially when most of it's going to be overlayed?
Oh, I...
When you call a contractor and say, "Yo, I've got 10 miles of road, I want you to overlay it, go for it."
Maybe you misunderstand me, I'm saying $275 plus, take $225, there's your half a million.
So what's wrong with paying cash for a new fire, a new ambulance, or a dump truck when you have the cash sitting there? Why would you pay interest if you have the cash? Once you start building that UDF, uh, you know, to, or, UFB, sorry, and you build it up, you're actually hoarding money from the taxpayers that you don't need to.
For, for one year. For one year, while we come up with a plan that matches...
There is a plan, there is a capital improvement plan. It, it goes out for five years, and I looked at, and, and we're taking care of that first year, that $400,000.
No, but that was not, in the original proposal, that was not their first year.
It doesn't matter that it wasn't in the...
It was their second year.
But it doesn't matter that it wasn't in the original proposal. We have looked at it, we kept looking at it and going, "What, how can we do this differently?" Just because it wasn't in the original proposal doesn't mean it's not a good idea. That's my point. And, and I'll let Mike speak, do it.
Sam, um... As everybody on this board knows, I have not been in favor of a goal of meeting LD1 just to meet LD1. We had a great meeting last week with the Budget Finance Committee, and I guess it was a workshop. And I think we saw some basic consensus around the table of things that were palatable for a lot of people. I think staff took those suggestions back. And what came out of that with some discussion was Alternative Five. What surprised me the most from Alternative Five, when I look at Alternative One, which is sitting here in front of me, and I'm saying Alternative One, not the original budget, Alternative One had an exceeds LD1 of $174,000. Alternative Five, after that joint meeting with Budget Committee and, and this board, was down at 37.3. That, that's a pretty good week's work, two weeks' work from, from that meeting to this meeting. I was fully prepared to come in here tonight and say, "37,000 as an overlay, ask them, is a, a fair overlay to ask them." Because we don't want to use undesignated fund balance, that was one of our goals. And I, I got pretty comfortable with what I thought was consensus. And then Joe starts the meeting and surprises me by suggesting a way that we might find that $37,000. While I'm not convinced that the folks who gave up some of this money didn't do it under a little duress, we did find $37,700. So I sit here now with the option of an LD1 compliant budget that started $161,000 off back in February when we were given this budget. Not what I expected to see, not what I anticipated voting on. But if those numbers work, um, that were presented tonight to find that 37.7, we are April 2nd. We are five weeks after when we normally deliver a, a budget. Four weeks from our, usually our March to get it to the Budget Committee to give, um, Louise some time to print this. Our town meeting's approximately two months from tonight. I'm in a position to make a motion based on an LD1 compliant budget of Alternative Five that we move forward and send this to the Budget Committee as, as presented and amended this evening. Whether that gets a second or not is fine, but, um...
I'll, I'll second it, but I think there's some issues that you have to think about, if I may, Mr. Chair. One is you're going to have the warrant articles in front of you.
Correct.
To vote on. We do, we don't have it. Can it be done within the next week or 10 days, I guess, to make everything compliant, uh, and then send it, send it in there?
But I think to put the issue of tinkering with the budget further to rest would be helpful.
Yeah.
Because then all you'd be left with is constructing the warrant articles, and you could send it out to the Budget Committee. At some point, you have to say, "You've done it."
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm comfortable with, with the motion on the floor, and then come back sometime next week and look at the warrant articles and vote through the warrant articles.
Is there public comment on this?
Yep. Oh, leave it, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think before there was a motion and a vote, it would be appropriate to have public comment.
Oh, they will do this.
We'll have comment.
You can have the comment. There is public comment.
Public comment?
Yes.
Peter Levitt, Two Levitt Road, um, educate me. Uh, I, I have a rudimentary understanding here, um, and it might be helpful for others, although maybe not. What is, what is the consequence of being over LD1, uh, other than the, I believe, i- is it the impact on the mill rate, basically?
That's one of them.
What else?
It raises your budget, your base budget.
Well, that's if it's an increase rather than exceed. If you exceed for a year, it's a one-shot. There is, virtually is, is, uh, virtually none. What LD1 does is use a combination of a formula based on, uh, growth in the town, valuation, and says to the town, "This is how much you should, conceivably, without going to the voters to exceed this number, how much you, uh, can raise your budget this particular year." And in our case, that's where that discussion, Joe, when we talk about smoke and mirrors, nowhere in the Budget Proposal Number One was it ever mentioned that it was a $220,000 increase. It was always listed as, "We exceeded LD1 by $161,000", without saying to the voters that there's a built-in $60,000 increase from the LD1 formula. So the actual proposal, uh, that number, Joe, you were even caught by surprise at the first meeting, because you questioned me, "Where did you get that number?" The number was, LD1 allowed us for this year's budget to increase our budget by 60,000, and then anything that exceeded that in the request. And in Proposal Number One, which was the wish list budget, let, let's, and this is where, Joe, you might not, I may be smoke and mirrors...
But if I could, though, my, my understanding then is that there's a consequence on the mill rate, and we would have an elevated overall budget. And, and if I understand it, then the, the additional dollars would be generated by the mill rate.
If you go over LD1, the additional dollars would be added to the mill rate.
To the mill rate.
As, as you're at 60,000.
Property owners would pay more taxes.
If, the last few years, when we have had an LD1 compliant budget, our budget, although it has gone up, has not increased the mill rate. Most of the time, if you stay under LD1, you also do not increase the mill rate.
Absolutely, so I...
Because the growth factor is built into LD1 on how much valuation the town will increase by.
Makes sense, thank you. So i- if I understand that, and then if I understand it, how many years have we been LD1 compliant?
This is number seven.
And, and do I get the sense that that's pretty extraordinary?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So, so just so I'm, I'm clear on all of this. Therefore, um, uh, in, 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 I understand getting up here, sometimes citizens like myself can get excited and animated, and sometimes my voice shakes, um, because I'm not excited about public speaking. I think I've said once before, and a national survey says that, uh, if you ask an American, what, what's their greatest fear? It's not death, it's public speaking. Death is number two. But, uh, uh, last month, uh, my real concern, uh, about the, the budgeting process was the roads. And I, I believe I was misunderstood as far as a statement that I've tried to correct about not having confidence in town government, because I do. Whether you choose to believe that or not, I believe it, or at least I am deluding myself into that belief, but I do have trust in town government. What I did not have trust in, and what I actually used as a qualifier in my statement, was to trust this town government with actually spending the money on the roads. And that I saw the vehicle to get there, in my own simplistic economic strategy, is, "Oh, if it's a bond, it's dedicated. You have to spend it on the roads." And my distrust statement had to do with the fact that whether you're kicking the baby or the can, or throwing the bath water out with the can, or whatever you're going to describe it as, that that's where I have a lack of confidence at this point in time. So my goal was to say, and I seized on this, and I'm not an economics expert, was that to have tho- those monies dedicated would satisfy me. If there's another instrument, other than a bond, that will absolutely say, "These monies that are appropriated will be spent for roads," I would be happy with that.
May I respond? When you call it a road maintenance account, that means that money goes into road maintenance. The, you cannot spend more than $10,000, you can't take $10,000 more than $10,000 out of the account and spend it somewhere else without board approval. That's, so that money is dedicated to the roads. It doesn't have to be a separate bond issue, it's labeled road maintenance, it must be spent on the roads.
And there's, there's, I will tell you, I do manage, um, a, a couple of departments where I have to do the budget, and I have line items. And primarily, um, I have the flexibility to move money within that account, and I understand the accountability of more than $10,000. But if I had to spend more than $10,000 out of my medical supplies account, because, well, let's say a happy situation, I have more volume, and so my, my costs went up, uh, then I go to my immediate supervisor, and we work it out, and she tells me, "Okay, spend what you need."
Yeah, that's totally different, Peter, because we have a policy in place, you know, someone who likes policies, that it's over, anything over $10,000, that comes to Select Board. You don't answer to a board, and you don't have a policy in place that says you can't move money in between accounts.
Well, but what I'm hearing, Joe, is that it comes to the board for a decision. So if, if it's over that $10,000, the board can de- can decide, "We're going to take, um, $50,000 out of the Road Improvement Fund and, and buy an ambulance."
Well, that's true. But then you, you have an elected board here, and if you don't like what they're doing, you vote them out.
I understand. Uh, I guess, but my, my, that goes back to my, my, my concern that on this issue, uh, I've seen too much in the way of, "We're going to address this issue, and then we don't address the issue," to have confidence that any process short of absolutely dedicating the money, that's all you can spend it on, would, would, would assure me at this point.
Well, I mean, that's what it's there for, you know? That's what the line item says, so we're assuming that's where it's all going to go. You know, and, and in an emergency situation, the selectmen have a $75,000 contingency that they dip into, which we have in the past, but I don't, I don't know how much is spent in it this year, I can look it up, but it's not even close to $75,000.
I, I guess, my, my other concern being that if, if the, the, the money appropriated for the roads i- is, is, is spent, then, um, if, if we don't, my understanding is that, that, yeah, we do have $6 million of work to do. So, um, not to be taking this windfall and applying it all towards that, uh, um, opportunity, to me, would seem to be the right thing to do. And I would say, "You've done the right thing by seven years of staying under LD1." If I know the basics of investment, and the fact is, you, you actually invested in this town's financial security by coming up year after year under LD1. So when we hear on the stock exchange that there was some dip today, but it was due to profit-taking, at some point, when you've been doing it right, you got to say, "Uh, now I'm going to take a little of that back." And in this case, it would be, if we go over LD1 by $100,000, and that's going to mean an additional, uh, increase in the mill rate, so be it. Because if I understand it, we haven't done that in seven years. That may be one of the explanations why the roads are like they are right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. It's all right, Nate.
It's all right, I'll wait.
Mike?
I'd like to throw out an additional point, and hopefully I can make this clearly. If you look at the original budget that was presented by the town to us, it totaled a gross budget of $3,804,546. Alternative Five is proposing a gross budget of $4,346,812. And, and Peter, this is kind of a long way to try to answer, I think, part of what you just brought up. That's an increase in spending of $542,276 over the originally proposed budget from the town. And it's LD1 compliant, which the original budget was not, by $160,000. So I think you can also add $160,000 to the, to the, to that, that number. I'm just going to round. $543,000 of that sale of the tower has been put into this budget in a dedicated way that must be spent this year. And, I mean, I'm just doing a ground, a gross round number, I'm sure I'm not close, but it has been dedicated to, there's a couple hundred and 25,000, I think, to the roads. There's some capital improvements. So that's a one-time expense that we have because of the tower that we're able to spend. So we are also looking at an LD1 compliant budget that spends almost $550,000 more than what we did in the year we're going to end in two months from now. So I just want to point that out as an effort that also happened in the last few months. Now, that all changes if the tower's not sold and not voted for.
Right.
But in terms of using that cash now so that it doesn't just go into, into that savings account, that's a lot of cash.
And, and it's also important, if I may, Mr. Chair, to note that next year, you have to subtract that revenue that you spent this year on the budget, so that you're not starting off at a $4.3 million budget. You're really going to be at the $3.8 million or whatever it is.
Well, we haven't raised our LD1 limit by doing this because it is one-time money we're spending. We're not raising LD1. So we're still going to be at the lower LD1 limit. We're not going to have a new budget amount of $4.3 million.
And, and people are going to look at the budget and go, "You're going up by 17% on your budget." You're really not. You, you, you're using one-time revenue to, to invest in capital projects.
Thank you. I just got a point to make to, to Peter and, and to the board that any money that we receive in the Public Works Department for pavement or road maintenance goes to pavement or road maintenance. It's really easy to follow, it's on a spreadsheet, it's, it's never been spent on anything but road maintenance. And it's been said at a couple of meetings, and I've gone home and thought, "Jeez, I should have said something because it doesn't look good." We do spend it on the roads.
Well, you guys are going to be surprised because I actually agree with almost everyone up there tonight. Kind of going off what Mike said, um, I did think that workshop was very helpful, and I think we did, we did hammer out a lot of areas which we're, I think we're getting even closer. Comes down to, what I, what I'm seeing is, there's a group of us, there's a group that want to fix the roads. There's a group that wants to buy capital equipment. It looks to me like there was significant, well, there was some out-year equipment that moved into this year because of the one-time windfall. Could you go, could we go back and come, come up with a compromise? Move some of that equipment back out, I know, Joe, we want to spend the cash, move some of that equipment back out into the outer years, study if we need it, leave some in, and maybe bump the road maintenance to $750,000 this year, or $600 or $650,000? or six hundred or six fifty to get more work done on the roads. It's another slight compromise. So we, both groups, we get most of the equipment we want and we get more paving done that we want, but hopefully everyone is either dissatisfied or maybe, maybe somewhat satisfied. Just a thought, because I do, it does look like we did tend to move, um, some of the, and I don't, it would be the departments. It's primarily the five, it's primary public works and public safety. If you guys could look at your, and say, okay, you know, going back to what my grandmother said, you know, what do we, what do we have to have? What do we need to have? And is there any of the want-to-haves, maybe we can move it out there in, in, in future years so we can get more money, take a little bit more of that money and put it into paving? That's just a thought of another nice compromise. I don't want to bring up alternative six, but.
The framework of that.
Yeah, okay. I, I just, I just want to look at the CIP that was presented to us.
Joe, we still be spending the cash.
Right, I, I just, you said that we moved some forward and I don't believe we did. I think it's the original amount for this year.
Fire, fire's up to three sixty-five.
Joe?
Yeah, I got it right here.
Okay.
Yeah, if, if you look at proposal number one, the very first proposal that came out, the fire department, public safety budget for fiscal year two thousand thirteen, fourteen was ten thousand dollars for a generator and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a piece of land. Am I correct or am I not correct?
Two hundred and fifty thousand for the tower, not the piece of land, but the.
The tower. So your capital equipment, ambulance.
Was for two thousand fourteen. We did not change that. The town changed it.
Right, the town changed it. That's what I mean about smoke and mirrors. When you take proposal number five and you work it all the way backwards, what we're doing is we're, we're, from a position of Mr. Reynolds, we don't, I don't think we should sell the land for the tower. To Mr. Bruno, we should be bonding and not spending our money. We should be bonding. I am amazed that we're sitting here and I think it's a, it's, it's a, it, it, it's a cause for concern because when people change their minds and all of a sudden they're at a point where, oh, we're LD one compliant, you have to really critically analyze where we started, which was the wish list budget. Proposal number one, the initial one, it didn't include ambulances for this, this year. It didn't, it included a tower, which we're not really dealing with right now. I'd even concede you should get ten thousand dollars more if you want and take your capital equipment, uh, CIP and go from seventy-five to eighty-five. But right now, we have seen these iterations take us from an increase in saying, oh, what, look at how well we've done for the, for the taxpayers and we're increasing the gross municipal budget by five hundred dollars from a windfall that some people on this board didn't even want to take.
I, I mean, you know, I think it's important that you keep going back to the first budget presented a- as it's like some kind of firm document that you wanted, but it's not.
Well, it's the document, Joe, that when it went out through all the other proposals, the, the administration found fifty-one, though we were nickel and diming and you even said, you're squeezing this budget, they found fifty-one thousand dollars and it wasn't really hurtful, fifty-one thousand dollars.
Look, there, there have been meaningful discussions on the budget, though. And when you find things through discussion, there's nothing wrong with that.
Right, oh, I agree.
So I have no issue that we're on our fifth iteration of this budget.
But that, those iterations have philosophically changed every time. One, one iteration actually had the, the town manager saying that public work should go back to the two hundred and forty thousand dollar one, which we had all agreed as a community, as everyone had agreed, was, should absolutely be two hundred and seventy-five. So if you want to get into the details of each one of those proposals.
People responsible for having a discussion on the budget.
Right.
People throw out ideas. So when you say, well, the town manager said it was two hundred and forty thousand, well, that was in that part of the discussion, that was what was brought up. It doesn't mean it was set in stone. So, you know, so different ideas came up and here we are at budget number five where there were a lot of massage, a lot of massaging has gone on, different ideas. You moved the CIP forward one year, which means that in the next year, you shouldn't be spending all the money on CIP or it should be able to be reduced a little bit because you moved those equipment purchases forward. There's nothing wrong with that. There's nothing wrong with that. So don't blame people for changing their mind, looking at things differently. That's a healthy part of a budget discussion.
What, what is not healthy, Joe, is when you come in with a proposal that says, we're going to ignore a capital improvement and go back to the old way. But now, if you want, we can go find in one of those other proposals, an LD one compliant budget also. So to sit here on proposal number five and say how great we're doing because we're almost close to LD one is not, it's not correct. Because we had a proposal back when and you said, oh, let's cut, uh, public works paving by thirty-five thousand dollars back to the old way. Well, we had a compliant budget then too and I didn't see anybody raising the flag saying, let's go with that one. This is a major change. There aren't even notes that came with budget proposal number five. Every other of those proposals came forward with notes saying, this is how these, these changes will affect this budget. There are no notes attached to it.
Well, I mean, I threw out some of these numbers tonight.
There are notes by line item here. Move to TIF. There are changes, there are, there are notes with this, Charlie.
There are notes on the line items. Are there notes like, uh, are there notes that, uh, in, in the other iterations, at the end of each one of the line, the line item totals at the very end that, that state this, these are the compliance, these are the things that have, have changed in this, in this proposal.
They all match the notes that I took at the meeting last week.
I mean.
Do they say things like, uh, uh, this proposal keeps the requested two percent wage increase and half of the library RWPA increases, includes five additional hours in video. Tower easement sale funds are used for additional road maintenance, two twenty-five, eighty thousand for annual PD and PW CIP, four hundred thousand for PD and PW two thousand thirteen CIP equipment. No.
Yes, it says it right there. It says it right there.
Number four, that was all part of the process.
Number four.
Which is what changed to five, so that is all included.
Follow everything down.
I am following it down and I'm saying, why, then why do we have iteration five if proposal four was, uh, is the same?
Because that's what we worked off.
It, it built up number four. So I mean, you know, we're going to go around the circle here and I think. You know, the question is, Mike made a motion, I seconded it. We, we found some more savings to the tune of thirty-seven thousand seven hundred. Gets us LD one compliant, meaning it is no tax increase from the municipal side of this budget.
I believe that's incorrect. Sixty thousand dollars.
It's not a tax increase. It's a valuation increase.
You will get an increase in valuation that will probably more than swallow up that sixty thousand. Remember, we're a one billion dollar town.
Absolutely understand that.
A one percent increase is a hundred thousand dollars in valuation.
If we, if that's a projection.
Right.
Right.
And if you look at the real estate market and you look at prices of houses, everything's starting to go up again. So the chance of being at one percent increase is pretty good. So, Mr. Chair, I, we, we have a motion on the floor and.
Okay, uh, do you recall what the motion is? Can I repeat it?
Well, it, it was Mike's motion, so.
I'd be happy to attempt to repeat it. My motion was to move forward with alternative five plus the proposed changes at the beginning of the meeting that totaled thirty-seven thousand seven hundred dollars, which made this alternative five LD one compliant. It was seconded and then understood that it now must be put into warrant form, brought back to us and we must talk about each warrant and vote on each warrant separately before it can be sent to the budget committee.
Okay, we have a motion seconded. We've had comment. All in favor? Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that, uh, in keeping with the policy established, policies established by this board most recently, that we want to have the most input that we can have from the citizens requiring any override of LD one or any budget for that matter, that it go to referendum in the expenditures of the funds, uh, of the undesignated fund balance funds, that it be, uh, go to referendum on June eleventh rather than be at the town meeting in the interest of getting more and the best, uh, amount of citizens in the town to weigh in on this decision.
Motion made. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it for discussion purposes.
Discussion?
My understanding of sending the budget to the ballot box is the ballot box is not a binding location for a budget vote with a town meeting form of government such as we have.
I didn't think about.
That's just my understanding and I'm throwing it out there because I wanted to have that discussion. But that's my understanding.
We have a, an open town meeting form of government. You know, we, a while back, I guess a few years back, we did offer the budget as a, a non-binding, uh, referendum vote. I for a long time have advocated for the idea of, uh, you know, the, the referendum style. But what you have, and what you have historically have had is a open town meeting. So it causes a bit of a complexity and problem if you get an outcome different from the town meeting outcome or if you try to mix up budgets, one piece of it through open town meeting, one piece through referendum. Can have some bad outcomes and so I would suggest you want to do one or the other.
Jim?
Yes?
It's my understanding, if we do want to switch to a referendum-style budget, we would have to change our charter. And that's, that's my understanding of how we, and we, we can't do it in the next.
We have no charter.
Right.
But we're under this, because we have no charter, we're under the, the.
The state law.
The state law. So maybe I should say, in order to change that, we would have to have a charter.
Yes.
At which point that would have to be investigated and changed. And then we could move a budget vote to the ballot box if our new charter addressed it.
Well, you would have the former charter commission to come up.
Correct, I mean, right.
It's a huge process.
It's a couple of year process, but that's absolutely correct. That's how you do it.
Moved and seconded. Any further comment?
I, I just think if you go to the voters and say, we're presenting you an LD one compliant budget that will have no tax increase on the municipal side, why would you vote against that? I, it would baffle me, you know? But then again, I don't know.
Louise?
If I may, I believe after we had that vote once before, it was determined that we are a town meeting form of government, as Mr. Lloyd said, that the vote after town meeting had passed the ballot, or the budget, I should say. It was not valid. However, at town meeting, the LD one override or exceeding warrant article has to be a secret ballot.
Correct.
But it does have to happen at a town meeting and not beyond town meeting.
But i- if you are not exceeding LD one, you do not need a secret ballot.
Correct.
Right.
But, but you can't have a referendum after town meeting and have it valid.
Correct.
Moved and seconded. Any further comment? All in favor? Motion fails.
Opposed.
You have to have some notice. Oh, all opposed, I'm sorry. Motion fails. Okay, we'll move on to the next, the next item.
So, Mr. Chairman, can we, um, set a date for next week? For the, to meet on the warrants and voting on the warrants?
I believe we had a placeholder for the ninth.
Yeah, and, um, my, my calendar, I didn't have something on my calendar and I can't make it on the ninth.
I'm going to be out of town on the ninth.
So, um, can I throw out the eighth or the eleventh?
The eleventh might work for me, but the eighth won't and I'll still be out of town.
Eleventh works for me.
What is the budget meeting?
Twenty-second, twenty-second.
Yes, tentatively set for the twenty-second.
So are we looking at the following week?
I didn't hear what people said about the eleventh. Lonnie, you probably.
Lonnie's not going to be here.
Lonnie, Lonnie, when are you here? Let's, let's go backwards.
Just not here next week.
Okay, the week after?
How about the, the sixteenth or the fifteenth?
School vacation week is not good.
That doesn't matter to me.
Doesn't matter to me either.
I'm good this year on the sixteenth.
I'm good on the sixteenth. Charlie, are you here?
No, I'm not, I'm not good that week. I had set the placeholder for the ninth based on our last meeting.
I mean, I'll come in on a Saturday, I'll come in on a Friday. I don't care. What day's good for you, Charlie?
I'm, I'm, I'm open all next week. I'll come in on Saturday. I'll come in tomorrow.
Saturday the thirteenth? Saturday, yeah.
I'd much prefer Friday night.
Friday night.
Twelve. And Saturday the thirteenth, I'm planning to be out of town.
You're here Friday night?
You're not here Friday? Mike, you're not here the thirteenth, Saturday?
Oh, if I have to be, I, I will be. I would, I, I had plans.
There's no, no day in that school vacation week, Charlie, that you can be here? But you're okay on Saturday, Charlie?
Yeah.
I would, um.
I mean, i- if, if Lonnie can't be here any of those days, um, next week, I just, I don't know.
Well, I can't be there any day next week.
Till the eleventh, right?
Seven through the, even the fourteenth and, I mean, I'll, I can come on Sunday night.
You know what? To me, for me, the sixteenth works best.
I, let me, let me throw something out. If the thirteenth works, I made the motion to approve the budget as it stands. My vote is affirmative on every warrant article that's there. If it, if it, if I can't vote that way, that's my opinion. And I'll have to just state it at, at town meeting. But I don't, I don't think we can push it past the thirteenth and give the town enough time to get it ready for the budget committee on the twenty-second.
I mean, I'm fine with.
I don't, I think we can do that.
Because the other way around, we've got to have a little bit of time to get the warrant ready. After, if, and when you pass the warrant, then it goes to the budget committee.
No, I understand that, but if you guys are preparing the warrant, you, you need a week to prepare the warrant. So you're not.
Before you see it.
Before we see it. Then on the thirteenth, you would then have another week to make any changes because they're not meeting till the twenty-second.
But I would rather have a closer to the budget committee than.
I see what you're saying.
I think you could meet, uh, somebody mentioned the sixteenth, was that Joe? I think you could meet, meet on the sixteenth and have it ready.
Isn't that the school vacation week?
Yeah.
What does school vacation weekend to do with that?
Nothing now.
If, if you're going to meet on the thirteenth, isn't that part of school vacation week? It's the weekend before and.
It's Saturday, yeah.
So, I mean, what difference does it make?
I'm comfortable not being here for this. My, my opinion can be said at the town meeting. You folks know my position. If that's what it takes to get this done, I mean, I'm.
What's the date for you, Charlie?
The thirteenth.
Thirteenth.
The ninth, actually, but I set that as a placeholder a week ago.
I, I can't be here. I don't like Sam, can either, so.
And Lonnie's out of town. We set that as a placeholder without Lonnie, so.
Right. How about the eleventh?
No, you won't, you're not here.
The eleventh? Let's just set on Saturday morning, the thirteenth.
I barely get back the eleventh. I could be here on the eleventh.
No, you know what? Let, let's, I'll, I'll throw out the thirteenth Saturday morning and let's just get it done.
What time?
I'm up at four in the morning, so you tell me.
I could be here any Saturday this month except the thirteenth.
No.
Yeah. But again, you know, I'm, 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 the whole week I'm seven hours away. I'll drive back for the meeting and then just drive back for the next day. It's no big deal.
No big deal?
I do it all the time. It's the reason why I put ninety thousand miles on my fourteen-month vehicle.
I'm going to throw out the sixteen. I'm, yeah, the Tuesday. Keep it on the Tuesday and I'm, I'm comfortable with it.
Sixteenth is fine with me. What time?
Sixteen's good for me too, but not good for Charles.
Well, it seems like everybody has a conflict at some point, so you just got to pick a date at some point, and I'm, I'm willing to go with sixteen.
Me too.
Charlie, you back the twentieth?
Uh, no.
Well, twentieth is pushing it, I think.
On time-wise.
Lonnie, sixteenth?
Sixteenth works for me, but fourteenth is fine too. I don't know, it's the beginning of his, of his week, I don't know, his Sunday, fourteenth?
Fourteenth is fine.
Mike, sixteenth?
Sixteenth is open for me at this point.
Fourteenth is a Sunday, isn't it? I'd rather not do it on Sunday. I'd rather not, but if I have to, I will.
Let's stay consistent.
What about the sixth?
Chair, go ahead and do it the sixth, I won't do it.
Are you, are you going before the, I didn't know if you were leaving until Sunday or if it was Saturday, so, all right. I was just going to make Louise panic by saying the sixth.
Okay, we're going to do it on the sixteenth.
You can be ready on the sixth.
Wow, I thought that, that would cause panic, but Sam's not here on the sixth, so.
Sixteenth?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth is when we're going to do it, what time? Do you want to do it in the morning?
No, we got to do a regular meeting.
Regular meeting?
Okay.
Tuesday, Tuesday night, yeah.
So, if I may, so I understand this correctly, that one individual selectman who has made every budget finance committee meeting, every compensation committee meeting, and every select board meeting regarding the budget, and has presented at least twice major budget proposal concepts that have actually been incorporated into this budget proposal, even if it is alternate vision number five, will not be present at the meeting because it is inconvenient, even though the meeting was set for April ninth a week ago.
That was a tentative meeting on the ninth.
But I'm just, just, just to state the facts, not embellishing at all, that we set, and except for Mr. Taylor, who wasn't at that meeting, we all agreed at that time, April ninth, we set our schedules, we decided that was it, and now because of conflicts with three other selectmen about individual dates, we will pick April sixteenth, which is the one, is the date I can't be available, so it just, is that, is that a good summary? Okay, thank you.
So is that the date?
It's either that or the twelfth.
Well, twelve's okay with me.
Lonnie's not here.
But Lonnie can't be here.
Lonnie, can you, Lonnie, can you Skype?
I'll Skype. Many other things, too.
Can we set that up?
I think we're all set. I think we've, we've, we've said to, we've, we've given enough thought into this. Sixteenth it is.
Sixteen.
Okay. All right, the sixteenth, and we're offering the twelfth, so I'd want to hear any complaints about the sixteenth. That's when it's going to be next.
Oh, the twelfth? You're offering the twelfth?
Yes.
I would offer the twelfth, yeah.
We just said that. You just said you didn't want the twelfth.
You were too, you were too busy.
I was not, I said.
I was in a steam.
I was there at twelve, thirteenth, I said anytime before.
We just.
No.
Well, shall we say that the twelfth is Friday, correct?
I had agreed to the twelfth right at the beginning.
Twelfth is Friday, yes.
All right, the twelfth, you can't be here?
I cannot be here, but I will somehow, some way be in someone's ear.
Okay, and what about all the, well, I'm not.
Yeah, we can Skype you right on the big screen.
Put them on the projector.
Sounds great.
There you go. And you're going to be here, Joe, on the twelfth?
I'm here on.
The twelfth it is.
There you go.
Twelfth at seven?
Twelfth at seven.
PM.
Yep. Friday night, seven PM. Well, there goes the party. Yep.
Oh, it's just beginning. It started, I think it started yet.
I gave you that.
Thank you.
But a boom.
Okay, now that we've settled that, we're going to go into, like a motion moving an executive session pursuant to one MRSA four oh five six E consultation with CEO and town attorney regarding pending land use legal matter. And the town attorney will be on the phone.
It's ten fifteen, second.
I'll move it, yeah. I'll move it under the appropriate citation.
Second.
Okay. Meeting is back in session.
I'm making a motion to come out of executive session.
Second.
All in favor? Motion pass.
I, I will make a motion that allows our town CEO and our town attorney to continue down a mutual agreement with a mediation that occurred and to come back with us with a, a signed contract and also go to a public hearing.
Second. Discussion, all in favor? Motion pass. Okay, payroll expense, wait a minute.
That's Lonnie.
Fiscal warrants.
Go ahead, Lonnie.
You want to over the top edge?
Public comment? What? Like taking a motion to accept treasurer's warrant dated four to two thousand and thirteen for the amount of one hundred and sixty-five thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cents.
Second. All in favor?
I'd also like to make a motion for, to accept the payroll expense summary dated four to thirteen for the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and twenty-one cents.
Second. All in favor?
Next is town manager's report?
Yes, I can see.
Okay, roll that. Two meetings, we have a budget meeting on Friday, April twelfth at seven PM here at the broadcast studio, and then the regular board of selected meeting on May fourteenth, also here at the broadcast studio at seven PM.
I'll be out of town on the fourteenth.
Fourteenth? What was the fourteenth?
May fourteenth.
Oh, May fourteenth.
May fourteenth.
It's getting late.
Do you want to adjust that date?
Uh, no, I think that's good. I mean, it's up the chair.
I just keep opening my mouth and I need to learn to shut it.
You're not going to be here on the fourteenth, Mike?
No, my son's birthday. I will be out of town.
Bring him here for a field trip?
No, no, we're going to be out of town.
Okay, well, there you go.
I'm good with not being here.
Are we ready to call it an evening? Is there anything else left?
No.
Most.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? Good night.